Pursuant to the provisions of the Government Code Section 54953 subdivision E and the recommendation of the Ventura County Public Health Officer issued September 21st, 2021, Social Distancing Recommendation as determined by the City Council on December 20th, 2021. I am now calling this meeting to order. Welcome to the closed session portion of the City Council Meeting of January 18th, 2022. I am calling the meeting to order and it is now six o'clock. This meeting will be again conducted pursuant to the positions provisions of Government Code Section 54953. I think I already mentioned that earlier here. So the public has been informed in advance of the meeting how this and how to submit public comments to our city clerk and all submissions will be read into and part of the official meeting record. Madam Clerk, will you please take roll call at this point?
Councilmember Gama?
Aki.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Perez?
Here.
Mayor Protan Martinez?
Present.
And Mayor Rollins?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any closed session general public comments at this time?
Sir, we do have a few members of the public attending and now would be the time for general public comments. However, if their comments pertain to the closed session agenda item, I prefer for the city attorney to introduce that item. But members of the public, if there's anybody who has general public comments, we can submit those at this time. And if your comments have to do with item number one for closed session, then we'll introduce the item and then you can do your public comments.
Thank you. So at this time, Mr. City Attorney, could you please read the closed session item into record?
Absolutely, Mayor Rollins. We have one agenda item on closed session tonight. That is conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. The city's designated representatives are Brad Connors, the city manager, Charles Paretz, the deputy city manager, and myself, the city attorney. The employee association at issue is SEIU Service Employees International Union Local 721.
So.
And sir, I believe your first public comment could be from Daniel Correio?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Rollins, council members and city staff. My name is Danny Correio. I'm the regional director for SEIU Local 721. I'm here tonight on behalf of our members, your employees, to urge the council to do the right thing and treat all city workers with respect and to treat them equally. The disparity in the proposal and the proposed special pay between the police department and our frontline workers is a slap in the face to our members who have been dealing firsthand with the dangers of the pandemic since the very beginning. Do members of the police department deserve what they receive with the special play pay? Absolutely. But how do you put a price on the value of one employee over another? As a reminder, safe streets, clear of debris, clean water, and treatment of always are all safety concerns that we all take for granted. When there's a fire, firefighter will be the first to jump in to the dangers of the flames. When our city was burning from the threats of the pandemic, our members were first on the scene, keeping this city clean and making sure that we could continue serving our communities with minimal disruptions. You should be hearing from some of the specifics of these dangers from one of our city worker members shortly. I'm not sure if she's on standby right now. I'm glad that the city is able to provide some pay for our city workers, but we're looking for equity here. Our members faced the fire as well and suffered the consequences by having to be extremely careful around their family members to avoid exposing them to COVID. We also need more flexibility on the requirements around eligibility for the special pay. This pandemic has been ranging raging for two years, so we ask that the eligibility be expanded to include some of the employees who are not eligible for this special pay. We urge you to make sure our dedicated workers have parity and equity by doing the right thing in your deliberations of your closed session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Correio. Do we have the second comment, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I see a hand up from, it says Jess iPhone, so I'm not positive. If you could state your name for the record and go ahead and provide your comments. You have three minutes.
Yes, it's Jessica Cerda. I work also for the City of Porayemi and the Housing Department. Good evening, council members. Before you hear today on behalf of fellow coworkers to bring to your attention our disappointment in the poor decision taken by all of you on the December 1st special meeting council meeting in regards to special pay for city employees. It is a shame that all of you made a decision without truly doing any research on what city employees have done and continue due for our city during this COVID pandemic. Councilwoman Hernandez, from your statements, it seems you believe our police officers were the only ones in the front lines. What is your definition of being on the front lines during COVID? Although we do appreciate our police officers, we city employees are and have been on the front lines as often and as exposed as our fellow officers, in some cases possibly more. Our janitorial staff have come to work every day cleaning and sanitizing public bathrooms, not only in our city buildings, but in our beach restrooms and our parks, areas frequented by much of the public. Our facility maintenance staff has worked taking care of repairs throughout every department in every city building, petitionally exposing themselves to others on a daily basis because of city needs to continue running. They also take care of repairs outside of our buildings at the beach and park as well, once again coming across the public on a daily basis. Other departments continue to go out conducting inspections, putting themselves inside a residence to accomplish their duties. These are only a few examples of city employees that continue to come to work and do their job regardless of the pandemic. Unlike some, we were not the ones with the privilege to work from home during this pandemic. Today, you will hear from the city manager under business item number 11. His staff report states, I quote, "SEIU advocated for reconsideration of special pay tiers due to perceived COVID risk exposure equity with police department employees. We cannot agree with the wording of this statement. There is nothing perceived about our COVID exposure or equity. COVID has been here, it is here, and unfortunately will continue to be here. We also do not agree with this with his recommendation to bring us up from the lowest tier to the same tier as non-sworn police department employees. The equitable decision will be equal paid to for police officer, non-sworn, or city employee. We highly encourage each one of you to speak with us on what our daily activities entail and where our front lines lie. We all serve one same city and as such, we ask you do not add to the divide and distress that already exists. You have the opportunity to do the right thing for the City of Porayemi employees. COVID does not differentiate or discriminate between a blue uniform with a badge or an orange uniform with a City of Porayemi patch. So why would you? Thank you."
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Rollins. Do we have any other presentations at this time?
There are other members of the public here. If you would like to unmute your mics or use the raise the hand feature, if there's anybody else who would like to provide public comment, now's the time. Sir, I don't see any other hands being raised or anybody unmuting. One last opportunity for anybody who'd like to make public comments. Otherwise, we may continue, sir.
Okay, so hearing no other public comments, can we now go into closed session to discuss the agenda item? Mr.?
Welcome to the regular city council meeting and the special surplus property authority meeting of January 18, 2022. I am calling this meeting to order at 6:40 PM. Before I start, I want to apologize to the general public. We had an extended closed door meeting that we had to go over on. So at this point, please stand and join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, okay. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to the provisions of government code section 54953 and subdivision E and the recommendation of the Ventura County Health Officers issued September 21st, first 2021, following social distance recommendations and the determination most recently by the city council on December 20th, 2021. The public was informed in advance of this meeting how to submit public comments to our city clerk and and all submissions will be read into and part of the official meeting record. Live public participation is accessed through meeting Zoom link published on the agenda, and we highly encourage and welcome the community participation. Those attending will have multiple opportunities throughout the meeting to provide public comments. Madam Clerk, will you please take roll call?
Councilmember Gama?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Perez? I believe I see her as part of the meeting. Mayor Pro Tem Martinez?
Present.
And Mayor Rollins?
Here.
Okay, tonight's inspiration is by myself, and so I have the inspiration for tonight. Tonight, my inspiration is that of Martin Luther King. As we know, yesterday, we celebrated his abbreviated life with a national holiday, which is held the third Monday of every January since it was signed into law by President Ronald Reagan in 1983. His hallmark and his success was promoting civil rights through nonviolent activism. Civil rights included many things we have come to expect and in some case continue to secure: the right to vote, labor rights, eliminating poverty, and integration. Through nonviolent protests, he set the stage for all people to effect change of what is fair and right through peaceful protest. For his efforts, he won the Nobel Priest Prize in 1964. Many street schools and buildings are named in his honor, and he received the Presidential Freedom Award in 1977 by President Carter. One of his many inspirational quotes that touched me, and I feel directly relatable to each and every one of our residents at a local level, he said, "Our lives begin and end the day we become silent about the things that matter. The time is always right to do what is right." I encourage all Wayneemi residents not to become complacent or jaded, to reach out to your elected officials and city staffs to share your concerns, suggestions, and vision. Be persistent, but be respectful, and challenge us to do what is right and best for our community. Mr. City Attorney, please report the closed session report.
Thank you, Mayor Rollins. There is no reportable action taken in closed session tonight.
Okay. We will now hear from the general public comments not pertaining to the agenda on the to the items on the agenda, including written comments received by our city clerk. Any comments from those who are participating live with us this evening? We'd like to ask that you use Zoom raise your hand feature so we can call on you during the appropriate comment times. This will be the same process for comments pertaining to each agenda item as well. Staff will unmute, staff will unmute your mic, and you will have three minutes to provide your comments. Does anybody have any public comments tonight, Madam Clerk?
Sir, I've received no written public comments. However, there are several members of the public attending the virtual meeting tonight, and I'd welcome them to use the raise the hand feature if they would like to submit a public comment. And now is the time.
Okay, so my my first public comment on my screen, I only see one raised hand, and that's from staff member Scott Madeline. So that can't be right.
So again, members of the public, this is your time either unmute yourself or raise your hand if you would like to provide a general public comment on an item not pertaining to the agenda.
Okay.
Mayor, Councilmember Gama has his hand raised.
Yes, Councilman Gama, you're reporting as a member of the public.
Yes, just wanted to briefly thank both the city of Oxnard, the city of Port Wayneemi, for assisting with our post-rain runoff beach cleanup. And it's, it's, it's really nice to be able to say that we are making progress, we're getting better, but that's, that doesn't mean we're out of the woods with regards to pollution. And often, I wonder why is Ormond Beach forgotten? And it's forgotten because it doesn't sit along the freeway, and people don't drive by it and can't see it every day. And so, while we've made significant progress over the last five and a half years with our weekly Saturday beach cleanups, after this last rain exposure, we were very upset to see trash from the lagoon, Ormond Lagoon, which technically is in Oxnard, and trash all the way up to the lighthouse. And in that trash, we found probably close to 10 syringes, some of them with drug residue in, in and on Wayneemi Beach, which is in the city of Port Wayneemi. And this hazardous material is coming through the Ormond Lagoon. And I'm working on a letter, and I hope that the council could get behind me on this, but we need to get regionally involved and get not only the county, the city of Oxnard.
Mayor Gama, you remember, you're reporting as a public citizen, not as a member of the council at this point.
Okay, thank you. So my hope is that we can somehow come up with a way to minimize the amount of plastic syringes, body waste, nasty stuff making its way onto Wayneemi Beach, knowing that it doesn't originate in Wayneemi. And that is my public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. May I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda? Madam Clerk, will you take, oh, do we have a motion in a second?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second. Madam Clerk, will you please take a roll call vote?
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Martinez?
Yes.
And Mayor Rollins?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, our first presentation tonight is our COVID-19 update. I would ask members of the council to reserve your comments till after the presentation is made.
Well, good evening, Mayor.
Mayor Protem, city council members and staff. Welcome to two thousand twenty-two with the COVID update presentation. Now, before I begin, I'd like to just make a couple of quick comments. Lots of information that's going to be going out tonight, so I will try and get through it as expeditiously as possible, but I also want to articulate several significant points that are important for our region specifically. And second, I kind of want to make a little allusion to, if you've ever been to Colorado before and you don't like the weather, what's the saying, wait twenty minutes and it'll change? Drawing a line to COVID with that because as we continue to learn more and more about COVID, some of the rules and regulations are naturally going to change based on the activity that COVID is creating. So I want you to go through the presentation and just be a little bit flexible and see where things have moved and where things haven't, and hopefully it will be informative for you. One final note before I begin is when I'm going through the county's numbers specifically, at this point, there isn't a distinction between the word vaccinated and vaccinated and boosted. So as that question comes up, the county has yet to divide the two. So when you see the word vaccinated, we're just going to kind of put both of them together for the ease of the presentation. So with that, go ahead and load up that first slide. So last time I spoke to you was November fifteenth in two thousand twenty-one, and of course, now, a couple months later, here is where we stand with the numbers. Going through with people tested, of course, over four hundred thousand people in the two months have been tested just in our county alone, which is a staggering number to be able to pull off in two months. And if you've needed a test lately, you know that the lines are incredibly long and there's high demand, so those numbers are expected to continue, of course, as we make it through this next wave. Positive cases, Ventura County, we're up twenty-six thousand in two months, which, again, is quite on the rise, as I don't think that would be a surprise to most who are following what's happening both locally and nationally. Unfortunately, reporting fifty-one new deaths in the two months, twenty-five increase in the ICU capacity. So originally, we were at five back then, and now we're at thirty, and these numbers are again, as of Friday, as they have not updated yet on the county's website, so this is recent to Friday. And then here locally in Port Wayneemi, we are up to thirty-six hundred and seventeen cases, which is six hundred and ninety-nine additional cases, which is a difference of about twenty-four percent, so we're increasing here over that particular time period. The deaths here in Port Wayneemi as well are up by two, and our active cases currently as of Friday, we have two hundred and one residents who are battling COVID at the moment, which is a six hundred and eighteen percent increase from two months ago. So unfortunately, COVID is, of course, on the rise right now, but as you'll see in my presentation a little bit later, there may be some better news on the horizon. Next slide, please. So looking at it from then until now in a graphic form, if you take a look at following the red lines, red just means increase. So we went from seven-day average case rate per one hundred thousand and nine-point-six when we last met. Today, or on Friday, it was two hundred and twenty-seven-point-eight, so that was a hundred-and-thirty-seven percent increase over two months. And as you can kind of see through the graph here, looking at our seven-day testing positivity rate, we went from two-point-six up to twenty-four-point-seven, so you know, you're expecting to see a lot of cases as they make their way through the line and get tested. So we've got to work on getting those numbers down specifically in our county, but here in Port Wayneemi, as you'll see on the next slide or two. And then just to point out, the current hospitalizations are about three hundred and eleven right now. That number from when I was talking earlier is likely to go up slightly, but as you'll see in just a little bit, we are hopeful that as the case rates go through, that the total number of people who are transmitting is going to go down since so many people have been experiencing it, and in a combination have been vaccinated, which you'll see here shortly. Next slide, please. So on this slide, I always like to do a historical comparison, and you can see on the bottom with the purple arrows that this was taken March of two thousand twenty-one, remember when we had the colored tiers? That was an indicator on when things could slowly open and stop or slow the spread. And if you look at our seven-day average case rate back in March, it was nine-point-one. Today, it's two hundred and twenty-seven. Our positivity rate, three and a half, is now twenty-four and a half, and our adjusted is twenty-four-point-seven, so we are significantly higher as we move forward through two thousand twenty-two. Next slide. Okay, here's the vaccine comparison update. When we last spoke, countywide, we were at seventy-five-point-six, as you can see on the upper graph. Today, we're holding at about seventy-eight-point-two. That number is slowly going up. I know the target was to be at about eighty percent, and we are inching closer each day. Another thing to point out is that the time of the last presentation, the available people who were able to get vaccinated was still at twelve, so as you can see represented here, this is comprising of folks who are twelve and older. It's not taking into account that I have highlighted at the moment, those five and up. So from twelve and up, we're getting pretty close to that eighty percent, just a couple more to go. So as you'll see through the presentation, we are encouraging any and all members of the community who have not yet been vaccinated to take that next step and go ahead and do that. Next slide, please. Okay, on our last presentation, I pointed out to you that Port Wayneemi was looking for a little bump and some help on getting the eligible folks in our community to get vaccinated. The highlighted line at the bottom of the screen is demonstrating at that time, back in November, it was about sixty-one percent of the eligible folks in our community had taken advantage of the vaccine. Today, you'll notice highlighted in the red box is sixty-point-two-four percent. So the first thing you're probably thinking of is, wait, how does a population go from sixty-one? How did we lose one percent? Well, the answer is, is at the time of my last presentation, it didn't take into account our younger population, so from five to twelve. So now that that is being taken into account, we've dropped a percent. And if we're looking really closely at it, you can see that we're towards the lower end of the county in our vaccination status with Thousand Oaks and Moor Park taking the lead at over seventy-five percent. So the next question you might be asking, well, why is that, and what are we doing about it? So as I spoke last time, the Prometaurus Initiative hosted by the county of Ventura is making great progress. We now have two folks that are going to be representing Port Wayneemi and reaching out to those communities that may not have as much access to information or resources in order to go get vaccinated and/or tested. In addition to that, we've hosted multiple clinics since November throughout the city of Port Wayneemi and South Oxnard, and we're continuing to encourage folks to go ahead and get that vaccine, and working with different organizations to come into Port Wayneemi and host those. So what we're hoping for over the next couple of months is with the help of Prometaurus and getting the word out that the vaccine is still out there, it's still available to get, and it's safe, that some of the folks in our community who haven't taken advantage of that will. Next slide, please. Okay, the mask mandate. I think it's probably clear by now through the presentation that we're nowhere near getting rid of masks, but just in case we think we're close, we'll go ahead and just take a quick look at that and see what work we still have left. Three categories, of course, the yellow one is we need a rate of seven per one hundred thousand for at least three weeks. We need hospitalizations in our county low and stable, and at least eight weeks need to have passed since the vaccine was available for five-to-eleven-year-olds and had eighty percent of fully vaccinated folks vaccinated. So where are we with that today? Next slide. Per the CDC, we are at a red level, high transmission. We have an average seven-day case rate of two hundred and twenty-seven, and we need that to be at seven. I don't know that any more is needed to talk on that. We aren't even close. However, there are some things we can do to get there, as you'll see in just a moment. Next slide, please. Our hospitalization and critical care ICU units. Back in November, we had twenty-eight in the hospital and five in ICU. As of Friday, there were three hundred and eleven hospitalizations with thirty in the ICU, and if you do the math on that, that's a thousand percent increase in hospitalizations and five hundred percent increase in ICU capacity, so we are not looking good in that area either. And I'll make a couple of notes on my ending slide about some advice the hospitals are giving, both on the local news, national news, and here at home, so there's a few things our citizens can do to help with that. Next slide. And finally, the third criterion is eight weeks for the vaccine to pass eligibility for five-to-eleven-year-olds. We hit that around December thirtieth, so we have met that part, and that number at seventy-eight-point-two, we're getting close to eighty percent. So here is part of the good news, is we're getting that vaccine rate up, it's just taking some time, so the more folks who get vaccinated, the quicker that this thing will hopefully come to an end. Next slide. Okay, so who's eligible for boosters? At our last meeting, it was a selected group of folks, now it's opened up to anybody twelve and over. And the key factor is if you've been vaccinated with Pfizer, you can get boosted five months after your second dose, and if you're with Moderna, you can get vaccinated at the six-month mark or longer. And J and J, of course, two months since you received that. There has been some questions about whether or not, if I was vaccinated with Pfizer, could I get Moderna, and if I had Moderna, could I get Pfizer and J and J? What do we do with that one? The research has come out that you can actually get whichever vaccine, Moderna or Pfizer. There are some rules with twelve and older, it's only Pfizer, but if you are in the older category, Moderna and/or Pfizer can be mixed, vice versa. As of now, it sounds like there's a lot of folks concerned with, well, if I get Pfizer, should I just stay with Pfizer? Absolutely, you can, but with kids especially, it's only authorized for the Pfizer series, so that's where things are going with that. So let's talk about site locations. Two hundred sites in Ventura County, and there's more being added. If you go to myturn.ca.gov, which is listed at the bottom, it's very easy to click on that and see all the available appointments. As you may or may not know, this past two weeks especially, leading into a little bit further, has been very difficult to get vaccine because there's been a high demand for it with so many patients and folks coming down with COVID. So go onto that website, there are sites added constantly, there's mobile clinics coming up that you can also access at vceemergency.com, and scroll through those and just keep calling and get yourselves scheduled. Next slide, please. All right, let's talk about unemployment, COVID, and all things related to business. So right now, this is reported, of course, a month or a month and a half behind, so at four-point-four percent currently as the last update that came out here in Ventura County, which is doing not so bad in comparison with the state, but as far as percentage goes for the nation, they're at about three-point-nine, we're about four-point-four. But what's significant about this slide that I'd like to just speak briefly on is the notion that there is beginning to be a shortage in some specific sector workforce, specifically those in healthcare who are on the front lines with patients day in and day out contracting the virus and getting sick. I saw a report put out today that the general labor market nationally is down two percent, which basically is a direct correlation, and we all know that the cost of goods are going up. If we've been to the store lately, things are increasing, inflation is going up slightly. So as things progress, we are hoping that these folks are going to be returning back to work soon, and that we can get those labor numbers back to where they're stable in going in a downward trend. As far as us here at the city, I'm proud to report and wanted to let council know that we have a very good COVID prevention program that contact traces, we know lots about how the virus is spreading, and those folks who have had it have all been traced to having it from outside of work rather than transmitted inside. So we have not seen, in our police force or others, this type of response that it's taking everybody out of the workforce. We are fully staffed and pushing through this part of our COVID road, so we're hoping that those folks who do have it are coming back soon, and we can get these numbers down. And finally, the next slide, please. So kind of some final thoughts moving in to the end of the presentation. I just wanted to put this graph in here and let everybody know, especially towards the end, if you look at December and just look at the two lines, one of them goes way up to three hundred and eleven and the other goes to eighty. Our unvaccinated case rate, starting in December, went from fourteen per one hundred thousand all the way to three hundred and eleven per one hundred thousand. So that's that massive spike that you see in kind of a purple color on your screen. Vaccinated cases went from three per one hundred thousand to eighty per one hundred thousand. Again, a tremendous increase, but look at the separation difference on where cases are coming through. So what this is really geared to represent is those folks who are still either hesitant about the vaccine or not quite sure of it, it's a pretty clear numbers picture that those who are vaccinated, it's a very low trending line, and those who aren't just spiked tremendously here in December. So we want to move to help folks understand that getting vaccinated is a good thing, it's helping bring the numbers down, and it'll get us back to where we need to be as quickly and as efficiently as possible. So a little just visual there for you to kind of take in. Next slide, please. So wrapping it up, get vaccinated, get boosted. So these are two separate entities, if you will, that I'm hoping the county will move to get us some data on rates with boosted versus vaccinated. We want to stress that if you are vaccinated and it's been five-plus months or six, depending on if you got Pfizer or Moderna, that you definitely get boosted and get that protection. Testing, as you've seen in schools and around town, get tested if you are experiencing symptoms or have been in close contact with somebody who does have COVID, and that way you can help stop the spread there. And this morning, I was informed that there is a website that's run by our federal government, which is covidtest.gov, and they will be sending multiple rapid tests to you starting at the end of January, and I highly recommend that if you're needing COVID tests, you can log in there, and I believe they give you, I could be wrong, I think it was eight COVID tests per household. It could have been four, I can't remember, so don't quote me on it, but either four or eight, and it's free delivery through the postal service right to your home address. So if you are in need of rapid tests or want them for the future, please go to covidtest.gov and sign up. And two final pieces of information, please make sure you wear your mask. What has been identified has changed a little bit is the cloth mask versus the either N-95, KN-95, or the surgical masks that we issue all of our folks here in the city. Omicron has been led to actually passing through the cloth, and it's general guidance across the board that if you have a surgical and/or KN-95 or N-95, that those can be worn. And finally, hospital information to the public. One of the big calls for help, if you will, is that in a time where there is such a high demand for COVID testing, some people have thought it was a great idea to go to the local emergency room to get a test because they wanted to either get cleared to go on a trip or need to get back to school or just had a general concern because they weren't feeling good. And hospitals, if you don't know, are extraordinarily overwhelmed at the moment. Any and all emergency traffic, of course, needs to go to the hospital for treatment, but if you're just needing testing or you have questions, please reach out to either your local doctor or any of the testing centers to get tested, and please help to allow treatment for those individuals who are significantly suffering. So with that, I will take any comments, questions, or concerns you may have in relation to COVID.
Yeah, thank you, Mister Madelon. We have a question from councilperson Gama.
Yes. Do you know how the county health officials explain the... Are they explaining the increased case rate with Omicron? And I think it was a thousand percent... And I think it was a thousand percent increase. We went from nine to two hundred and thirty seven to per one hundred thousand. And isn't that a positive in that the hospitalization ICU numbers haven't gone up a thousand percent? I hope that makes sense. But but yes, there's a, the infection rate is really high right now. But the hospitalization rate with Omicron is very low. So I'm just trying to bring out some positive information in this. I think in the long run, that may help us out. And I don't know if there's any guidance on that. But then, is there any guidance from the county health officials what to do if you suspect that you have COVID? And is it age related? In other words, if you're eighty years old, watch out for this. If you're five years old, ten years old, you have COVID, what is the best treatment modalities for you? And personally, I, since Christmas, I have known fourteen people that are positive with COVID, and all of them were vaccinated. So just wondering if is i- i- is the hospitalization being driven by the age of the person or something else?
Okay, so three uniquely separate questions. So let me start with your first one. COVID rates and Omicron as far as hospitalizations. As you saw on the slide, hospitalization rates continue to increase, whether it's from Omicron Delta or anything. Omicron variant has been shown to not embed itself as deep in the lungs and cause as much damage as, say, Delta or the original variant. It tends to lodge up in the in the nose and the back of the throat. However, people are still suffering. Those who vaccinated or not have had to be hospitalized and or depending on their level of critical care, put on ventilators. So it does, it does affect all all ages, from newborn all the way up until, you know, our elderly population. And what's significant about Omicron specifically is that it's, and you mentioned this in your last comment, it is penetrating the vaccine barrier. And the reason for that is because the original COVID, as we know, is COVID nineteen. And the Delta variant, Delta only had a couple of mutations and was still able to be very well treated with the vaccine. Omicron has over fifty mutations, several of them in the thirties on the spike protein, which is what adheres to your cell and then infiltrates and then starts replicating. The problem with that is that this vaccine, number one, was designed to keep you from getting significantly ill. It wasn't to prevent you from getting it completely. What it is, is it's keeping you out of the hospital. And what the Omicron variant has done is penetrated that. So what you you are still getting these breakthrough cases is what they're being called that are affecting folks. And they are, right now, there's about twenty three percent of the cases in Ventura County are the folks who have been vaccinated because Omicron is is penetrating that that barrier. What hasn't been accounted for, which is part of your second question, is is there a difference between vaccinated and boosted? And what research is showing is yes. As it's about the six month time, the antibodies from the vaccine are dwindling, they're getting less and less. When that third booster comes in, they're seeing significant increases in your ability to fight the virus. And it's been very effective against Omicron with most symptoms from folks who have been vaccinated, mainly up in the nasal passages, sore throat, and the presenting symptoms that aren't as severe, that will take critical care. So we want to make sure and and hope that all folks decide to get vaccinated. And if they haven't been vaccinated to do it, and if they're ready for their booster to get it, because it will and is designed to keep you from getting significantly ill.
Thank you, Scott. And I just have one follow up. A person in my family vaccinated, got ill, got COVID, and then twelve days later, test negative for COVID, but is still displaying symptoms. Is that, I, if you don't know, just say, I don't know. But is that typical with with this disease?
Yeah, I would probably defer on answering that because I'm not a medical expert in it. But I don't think it is uncommon to hear some of the stories from what they're calling the long haulers. And even though they're testing negative, I have heard that there are folks out there who are still experiencing symptoms, weeks into months into some with original virus, a year plus. I mean, still haven't gotten all their their senses back, especially taste and smell.
Thank you for a very good thorough presentation and good information.
You're welcome, thank you.
Councilman, the councilperson Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor Rollins. Thank you, Mr. Madelon, for your presentation. You've really become well studied in the area of COVID. So I really appreciate your knowledge and your ability to explain what's going on. I was particularly happy to hear that we have instituted a very good COVID prevention program for the city. And I'm wondering, within that program, how many employees were allowed to work from home? What was the percentage, do you know, of employees that were allowed to work from home?
Yeah, I don't have that information.
Okay, maybe we could get that later at some point, or you could just send me an email. Whatever works the best. And let's see, did I have something else in there? It's gone, whatever it was, I forgot what that was. But thank you, that's all I have, thanks.
Okay. I just had two comments. My wife today actually went on that covidtest.org and was able to order four per family. So you're able to order four per family with that. And the second thing I'd like to note is, thanks to the efforts of Mayor Protem Martinez, they were able to do a free COVID quick test at Miranda Park this past Sunday. And the people who ran it told me that they'll also be doing one this coming weekend. Once I get the details, hopefully, we can put it on the city website. But they'll be doing one at South Winds Park, which is very close by in South Oxnard, and hopefully over at Volker Park. Mayor Protem Martinez, would you like to make a comment or question?
Yes, so I just spoke with them today and they told me that they ran out of the COVID tests. But as soon as they get more, that they'll let me know. That way we can, we can do a good job of planning it for this weekend.
Thank you.
That sounds great. And just a last comment adding to that. The public should know that testing is ramping up here in Ventura County. And I did want to make an announcement that there are two sites that are opening as of tomorrow. One of them is at the Ventura County HSA building at fourteen hundred Vanguard in Oxnard. And the second one is at Moore Park College. So both of those are coming online. You can go to vcemergency.com or vcrecovers.org to reach it directly and see what their hours are. And also, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. There are thirteen additional sites that you can see online as well. Most of them are open twelve hours, Monday through Saturday, but that does vary per site. So please look before you you head out and make an appointment. But the county has definitely seen the need to increase its its testing capacity and is responding to that. So I'm hopeful that through our local initiatives that our council members just spoke about and the opening of these new sites, that there will be a significant ease in testing as we move forward in the next weeks to months.
Councilperson Hernandez.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I remember what I was going to say, and it had to do with the pop ups, where I I also got tested at Miranda Park on Saturday. And I've run into this group before. They seem to travel to lower income neighborhoods to provide testing services. And the comments that I heard from the staff working at these pop ups is that, one, they're not getting a lot of support. They they need volunteers, they need to help getting people to help actually conduct the tests. And these people actually came from Los Angeles. I don't think they came from Ventura County. But one of them, the gentleman who I spoke to was actually from Hollywood. And he was saying that they just don't have enough volunteers to help them administer the test. And then I'm I'm real curious about how the word is getting out about these pop ups because these guys didn't seem, these groups didn't seem to be tied into the county plan. And we shouldn't be relying on council members, even though we all did a really good job posting on Facebook that they were there. It shouldn't have to work that way. There should be some county coordination there. I was just wondering if you knew how the county is linking with these organizations so that we can be better informed of where they're going to be and we can help actually get more people there.
I didn't have any information on this particular pop up. I know that the county, there's two different ways that I'm notified. One, they'll just send me an email directly, but two, they'll also post it on vcemergency.com. And that's how we get the information and then push it out. I would ask that if any of the council members or any of the public, for that matter, know that there's going to be a private sector pop up and they would like support, to please reach out, let us know. We will come together as a city organization and help support those folks that we can to get our members of the community tested. And and is also, I'd extend that to a vaccine program as well because there have been several initiatives over at the at the port and as well as in our system here over the last couple of months that have brought the portable vaccine. But we want to continue to help support that and including our promoters who are out there in some of those areas where they may not have as access like like some of us. So all of that is very important for us to know. So just please send us an email or give us a call.
Yeah, there was another issue, I think, with the county website you might want to take back to the county planners. And that was the Oxnard location on the website, it doesn't say appointments required. And you go there and you need an appointment. So it's very frustrating when you show up and they tell you, they turn you away because you needed an appointment when the website didn't say that. So I know there's a lot of problems with the scheduling and getting the information posted in a timely manner. But perhaps you could ask them to fix that.
Will do.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Madelon, and I appreciate your proactive attitude as far as getting this information out to the Wainimi residents. Hopefully, as you get information and we feed it to you, we're able to get it and to go to our Wainimi website so that people are aware of it. But thank you very much for the report. We now move on to number two on the agenda, and that is a Bubbling Springs Park update given by Mr. Villafano, our Public Works Director.
Good evening, Mayor Rollins, City Council. Tonight, we have an update on the Bubbling Springs permitting process for the removal of the reeds and vegetation. It's been a a long process, a very involved process. We've hired a very knowledgeable environmental consulting firm, Rincon Consultant. They've been doing a good job. To give you the update tonight, we have Mr. Eric Schat. He's a senior biologist with Rincon. And if the deputy city manager would allow Mr. Schat to share the screen, he will give the presentation tonight.
Don, I gave permissions to you, I'll just identify which one, Mr. Is it E S C H A A D? Is that the username that you would like to have permission?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, thank you, please give your report.
Okay, you should have access now.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Don, for that introduction. Thank you all for inviting me here tonight. Give me one second to get the screen share going on here and.
That's a nice clean part of Bubbling Springs, no reed there. Good job.
Yeah, so again, thank you all very much. My name is Eric Schat, I'm a senior biologist at Rincon Consultants. We're over in our, the Ventura office, just down the street from you. And like Don said, we were contracted to help the the city of Port Wainimi with their permitting process for the vegetation removal in Bubbling Springs. So it's a valuable resource in the city, and we're eager to be involved and happy to be involved in getting it back up to that beautiful condition that it once was. So what I'm going to do tonight is basically just walk you through a quick presentation. Oops, excuse me. Give an overview of what the actual project is, you know, what our task was. Talk a little bit about the biological resource assessment that we did as part of the permitting process. And then I'll speak a little bit about the permitting requirements and schedule, and then the SEQA or California Environmental Quality Act process and its respective schedule. And then I'll give a quick outline of the best management practices, sort of the conditions around conducting the work that helped the city to comply with those permitting conditions. And then a little bit about the next steps and and long term understanding. So getting right into it, the the project that we were tasked with is to support the city in obtaining permits on the SEQA environmental review for periodic removal of the vegetation overgrowth. That's primarily cattails and bull rushes, kind of a combination of native and non-native Russian reed type plants from the actual channelway of Bubbling Springs natural channel. So the primary activity will be the removal of this vegetation using mostly mechanized but also hand equipment. The mechanized methods would be just with smaller backhoes, skip loaders, that sort of thing. Sort of a very simple, clean scoop activity from a bank side stationed equipment, pulling vegetation and material out of the channel and depositing it to be disposed of at another facility. So a very nice, clean process. The current condition of the channel is displayed in these pictures here. You can see just throughout the channel, it's relatively choked out with the Russian cattail reed plants. But you'll notice, especially in the two photographs, center and left, a lot of this has started to die off over the last year as we entered into the summer month of twenty one. Much of that reed dies off, and those plants will actually just die and settle into the channel, causing even greater choking out of the waterway, just really interfering with flow, trapping up trash, you know, just kind of collecting all kinds of poor water quality around that stagnant water amongst the reeds. So again, you know, here at some of the roadways and other areas past residential neighborhoods, a lot of that vegetation just really chokes out that channel. So of course, this causes, you know, hazardous conditions in terms of potentially facilitating flooding. If during a rain event, the water can't flow as smoothly through the channel, it can back up, especially at the roadways here where reeds and and dead vegetation matter can build up and block the underpassing of the roads. So clearly, it's important to get that vegetation out of there, allow the channel to flow smoothly. You'll notice also in this left sided photograph here, there's a little bit of trash that collects up in this, in the in the reeds that have fallen over. So again, very important just for maintaining good, clean conditions. So in order to get approval to conduct this activity, there's a couple of different processes we have to go through. So biological permitting with the Wildlife and Water Resource Agencies, as well as SEQA Environmental Review, the California Environmental Quality Act. So I'll speak a little bit about both of these. But before I get into that, for both processes, there's sort of an initial biological resources assessment that needs to be done to gather current conditions information and to sort of set the baseline and understanding for going into the permitting and the environmental review. So the way we conduct our biological resource assessments, very standard in the industry. It's a two part desktop analysis and field survey. So the desktop analysis consists of a literature review, which involves querying agency databases, gathering information on known plants and wildlife in the area, as well as sensitive natural communities in the area. It may also involve reviewing literature written about the local area. So if there are other documents for biological studies done in the area of city of Port Wainimi, we would include those in our review. And then with that information in hand from that desktop analysis, we would mobilize biologists out in the field and do basically a reconnaissance level survey to go out and find out what is actually present at this given time. So just because some species may be documented in the literature, doesn't mean it's necessarily present at the current time. So our literature review turned up about thirty plant species, eighteen wildlife species. This kind of set the framework for what we're going to be looking for as we went out into the field. These are species that are considered of special status to the wildlife agencies, the concerned regulatory agencies, resource management agencies. So during our field survey, only one species actually was revealed as being present along the channel, and that is the western pond turtle. It's a fairly popular species with especially the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, but also the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. It's considered a species of special concern, and it was noted along the banks of Bubbling Springs, mostly south of Miranda Park on the north side of Surfside Drive. So not necessarily present throughout the channel. Also present and largely because of the vegetation, the nice riparian corridor going through there, lots of park trees and nice hedges, as well as in fact, in some of that reed and rush vegetation, nesting birds are present throughout or could be present throughout the entire channel corridor. That was something else that we noted as a potential concern to look into as part of the environmental review. Eighty plant species were identified, none of which were considered a special status species. So that's good news. Lots of variety of plants out there, but none that needed to be protected under permit. And then generally, one vegetation community, as expected, the cattail marsh, which did consist of a mix of native and non-native species. So that kind of sets the baseline. So with that information, then, the primary permit. As a bit of background here, there had been some previous coordination between Public Works and the Army Corps of Engineers and California State Water Board that indicated that based on the plan of this clean scoop method, there would be no need in permitting through those two agencies. So that was good news for us. We knew going into the project, we have that documentation in hand, that the only resource agency we needed to concern ourselves with was the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And their permitting mechanism is through California Fish and Game Code 1600. It's referred to as a lake and stream bed alteration agreement. And that is a permit, it's really an agreement between two entities, the applicant and, and CDFW, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, to allow some kind of activity to occur within a CDFW jurisdictional stream bed and riparian zone. So that was the permit we were planning on undertaking. And we had recommended, based on the city's needs, to pursue what's referred to as a routine maintenance agreement. So it's sort of a subcategory of the stream bed alteration agreement. It allows recurring maintenance activities, routine maintenance activities for a five-year period. So you can actually repeat your activity every year for five years under the same agreement. So with that in mind, the basic process for this then was for us to take the information we'd gathered from that baseline of biological assessment or biological resource assessment and prepare the notification package. They refer to it as a notification. It's essentially synonymous with the application. And so essentially, we're notifying CDFW that we, that the city intends to do this activity. We provide all the baseline environmental information, provide the details of the planned activity. And we submit that notification to the CDFW. It's actually submitted through this online permitting process now. This is actually new, or I should say, it's been bolstered up and become the standard now for CDFW just about the end of 2019, early 2020 it went into effect. So the City Public Works Department submitted the application, the notification through the EPIM's online portal. CDFW then accepts the notification, files it, and begins a statutory 30-day review period of that notification document. So during that 30 days, we're basically sitting back, waiting for their feedback. They're reviewing it. They can issue one of two options, issue a notice of incomplete, which implies that they need more information to actually complete their analysis and issue the agreement. In which case, they would return that letter, that notification with a letter of information requesting additional information from the city. If they deem the application is complete, and by the way, we are in this period right here, the 30-day review period. So we are awaiting word back from CDFW at this moment. We're expecting that about mid-January, so about, about later this week, early next. So if the application is deemed complete, then CDFW moves into a statutory 60-day period during which they actually prepare the agreement document. And so they'll take the information from the notification. They'll package that into their own agreement document. They may include additional measures that the agency requires of the city to carry out during the activity. And then, once that is completed, they will issue the agreement, or at least submit the draft agreement to the city for review. At which time, the city has the opportunity to review the agreement, determine whether or not the conditions of the agreement are sort of digestible, can be obtained, or can be executed by the city. If the city agrees to everything, they would return that approval. And then the CDFW would take that up through their chain of command to get it all signed and ultimately issue the agreement to the city. If for some reason, the city did not agree with some condition in that document, then there would be some opportunity to negotiate, look for revisions, come to the table, meet with the agency and, and see if they could meet some kind of mutual agreement. Again, it is very much an agreement document between the two entities. So we'll be undertaking this process over the next coming months. You'll note that in order for CDFW to issue that stream bed alteration agreement, a CEQA document is required to be certified, and I'll talk about that process next. So briefly, the current timeline, again, back in October of 21, the draft agreement was sent to the city for review. City reviewed it, ultimately uploaded it to CDFW's online portal. And currently, we are awaiting the review back from CDFW for basically a notice of complete or incomplete before they can then enter into their 60-day preparation period. So the, the important point here is just that, you know, we are responsive and coordinating openly with CDFW. So we'll be getting in touch with them probably as of tomorrow or later this week to just ask them where things stand, make sure that they are sticking to their schedule. And then ultimately, once the CDFW and the city have gone through their review period and mutually agreed on that notification, we would be estimating that the permit would be issued to the city as of April 22nd. So theoretically, that would be the earliest expected mobilization date for the city to get in there and start the vegetation removal process. So there are some caveats to that. Things could go faster, though it's not typically likely. It's possible things could go a little bit slower if there needs to be some back and forth coordination. If CDFW does issue a, you know, for some reason, an incompleteness letter, then we would need to negotiate, you know, additional information, meet their needs, probably schedule a meeting with them. Any of these issues could potentially slow that day down. But assuming everything goes smoothly, we'd be looking at about mid to late April as that. So that's the stream bed alteration agreement process. So I'll speak next about the California Environmental Quality Act, the CEQA process. So generally, CEQA is intended to disclose the significant environmental effects of any proposed project. And so this is an obligation under CEQA for an entity conducting any kind of environmental review. Councilman Gama, you have your hand up. I'm more than happy to take questions at this point.
What, what I'd like to do though is have you go through the whole report first.
Fair enough. I'm happy to do that too. Yep. So also in the CEQA document, then, we'd be identifying ways to reduce or if possible, avoid any of the environmental impacts that are identified. We'd be considering feasible alternatives to the proposed action. In this case, of course, the primary focus of the action is removal of the vegetation and it needs to occur where it needs to occur. So you can imagine there aren't really any alternatives to that. The only real alternative might be not conducting the activity at all and comparing what the effect might be under that. And that would be both to the, you know, human and the animal environment, the wildlife environment. So you can imagine flooding would be a consideration if no project was conducted and so on. That's the sort of analysis that's carried out there. Finally, the CEQA process also gives significant opportunity for the public to participate in the overall process. So there is a public scoping period, public comment is considered and is factored into the revisions of the administrative draft in preparation of the final draft. So the CEQA process is very involved. The CEQA lead agency at this time is the City of Port Wainimi. The California Department of Fish and Wildlife is a responsible agency because of their permitting authority and overview of wildlife and the overall riparian channel. And based on our analysis and expert input, the level of documentation required is what's referred to as an initial study and actually mitigated negative declaration. So that implies that any environmental impacts identified can be considered to be negligible under mitigation conditions. So everything can be mitigable to a less than significant impact. So the CEQA issue areas are pretty extensive. I'm not going to go through each of these in detail, but you can generally see there are a lot of different issue areas that are studied. Agricultural and forestry resources, not a huge deal along Bubbling Springs. Biological and cultural certainly were. Wildfire was a minor consideration, but one taken into account. Transportation, any potential for traffic effects, that sort of thing. Hydrology and water quality were a major consideration, especially when considering the alternatives analysis, and so on and so forth. So each of these issue areas is, is reviewed during the initial study. And anywhere potentially significant impacts were identified, were then carried through into the mitigated negative declaration for further detailed analysis and ultimately for mitigation recommendations. As far as the CEQA process, ultimately, it's referred to as the city's document. Rincon prepares the document on behalf of the city and with the city's input. So this document has been prepared and is currently in the city's hands for final review of the administrative draft. Any additional modifications, revisions that need to be made, we will do those. The city will ultimately publish a notice of intent to adopt the initial study, in which case, the document then goes into a 30-day public review period where the public has the opportunity to review the document and provide written comments back to the city regarding any of the issue areas addressed. After taking into account those public comments and making any revisions and response to comments, the city would then prepare the final documents, including all public responses and the additional mitigation and monitoring required, and would prepare this mitigation, monitoring and reporting program, which basically outlines all the measures required under the CEQA document. That then becomes the final package that goes to the city, City Council for adoption as the final ISMND. The city would approve that and then ultimately would file that notice of determination with the city, excuse me, with the Ventura County Clerk and certify that document. At this point, the responsible agency would also get that notice of determination and make their final consideration on it as pertains to their permitting obligations as well. That's the CEQA process. It's fairly lengthy and involved, and it's basically going to follow in parallel with the stream bed alteration agreement process. Again, remembering that that document needs to be certified before the, see, the SAA, the stream bed alteration agreement can be issued. As far as the schedule goes, again, we're up here in January with the administrative draft having been submitted to the city. Once we receive comments and can incorporate those into the draft, the city can then issue that notice of intent to the public and start the public review process. We're expecting this, you know, sometime around February going into March. And then upon incorporating public comments into the final ISMND, that document could be ready for certification as early as early April. There are a few fees associated with the, along the way, which we will continue to be in contact with Public Works to make sure that everything is filed as needed. Ultimately, the last one is sort of the more substantive one for the notice of determination with CDFW's responsibilities. Okay, so in summary of the best management practices, these are actually incorporated into the project. And this is one of the ways that we sort of gain good faith with the agencies. It sort of staves off, if you will, any major mitigation requirements coming back from the agencies. Sort of like, you know, it's just, again, it's a good faith showing on conducting the activity, you know, with the best environmental mindset in place. So scheduling and timing of work, this can include everything from seasonal timing to even daily timing. So nighttime work definitely has a lot of noise impacts on sensitive receptors like neighborhoods and whatnot. Nighttime work could also affect bats and other nighttime wildlife. So restricting work to daytime activities helps to sort of offset or minimize the potential environmental impact. Nesting bird seasonality, you know, so nesting bird season is roughly from early September, February to mid-September. And so avoiding that period helps to minimize any potential impacts from the project. Avoidance buffers would be incorporated. You'll notice this nice sign of environmentally sensitive area, please keep out. You know, during the project, that sign would apply both toward workers of the project as well as the general public. If nesting turtles or nesting birds have been identified, we might establish a buffer to avoid a work area so that work can actually continue elsewhere along the project. It doesn't delay the project entirely. It just may delay a specific area while that nesting is occurring. And then, once the, you say, in the case of turtles, once the species is captured and relocated safely to a new location, upstream or downstream, work may be able to continue in that specific area. If it happens to be regarding nesting birds, we might just set up a nesting bird buffer, in which case, we would monitor that with an avian biologist. You know, sort of kind of watch the condition of the nest, wait until the, the eggs have hatched and the chicks have fledged. Once the nest has been abandoned for the year, that buffer could come down and work could carry on in that area. So lots of different possibilities for how to, you know, mitigate and minimize for the impacts and still have the project continue on. The good news is that really, as far as mitigation is concerned, none were identified as necessary. And so this would imply things like off-site mitigation, replacement of habitat, you know, some sort of third-party location. Maybe the development of some mitigation plan for species recovery and rescue. None of that was identified as being necessary because of the implementation of the best management practices, essentially significantly or sufficiently reducing any potential environmental impact. So that's good news for the project. It sort of helps things move through more smoothly, keeps the agencies happy. Yeah, keeps everything on track. So the next big steps for the CEQA review process are to get the city's comments back on the administrative draft, incorporate those comments and prepare the final public review draft. And then ultimately have the city circulate that public review draft for comment. As far as the stream bed alteration agreement, again, proactive communication with CDFW is key. This is one of the things that we take very seriously is that, you know, personal one-on-one engagement with the agencies, keeping them active, keeping them focused on your project. Obviously, you can imagine they have a lot on their plate with projects going on throughout the state. And so the more you can keep their eyes trained on you, the better. Review the agreement for concurrence. Now, this will be an important one. Basically, Rincon can help the city through this process once CDFW provides that agreement and just make sure that it is palatable to the city and the city can comply with everything issued in that agreement. Again, just as a final long-term understanding, I'd mentioned that this was going to be a regular routine maintenance agreement. So for the next five years through 2026, each year, the city would have the opportunity under this permit to notify CDFW of the routine activity to occur. There's a minor fee. It's a few hundred dollars that is paid for each activity. And then through 2026, the city would be authorized to go in there and do that vegetation and trash removal as needed. There is a long-term option, however, CDFW has not been approving these lately. They want to see another review after five years to just kind of get an update on how the activity has impacted the environment, what the overall effects are, and then renew the permit for another five years. So that's where we stand on that. So that's pretty much it. I'm happy to take any questions, discussion, comments. I know there's a lot of information there. I tried to cover it fairly quickly to not take up too much of our evening. So hopefully, that was thorough and happy to discuss.
Well, thank you for the thorough presentation. We'll take questions at that time, Councilman Gama.
Yes, thank you. It's been said many times, nothing's easy, and this certainly is one of those projects that isn't easy. I'm a little concerned that the rain could really cause us a problem. Equally concerned that nesting birds could cause us a problem. So we're looking at, for all general purposes, May 1st as, as a start date. And we got into this situation, I guess, by lapsing on our previous maintenance plan. And I, it has been told to me that once we get the physical reeds out of there, there is a chemical option, an organic chemical that can be used to reduce the spread of these reeds. Is that a part of this abatement program, number one? And then number two, are you going from end to end, from the end of Bubbling Springs at the J Street Canal all the way to Bard Road at Bubbling Springs Park? So I see you shaking your head. So it is an end to end. And do you anticipate, if you find a dead tree, would it be permissible to remove that dead tree? If it wasn't, if you weren't aware of it? If it wasn't, if you weren't aware of it during all this planning and permitting processes? And so it's my understanding that this is a five-year process. And then probably in the fourth year, we'll start the permitting process to get another five years and on the books. Is that how this is going to work? Because I think for those of us. Connected to the environment, we don't want to get in this position again because we are definitely overdue on this project. So I was just wondering if you could address those three things.
Yeah, happily. So as far as chemical removal, we have not proposed that at this point, only because that does potentially trigger. State Water Board's involvement, you know, for a water quality concern. It is possible that organic, you know, treatments could be applied. Really, the, you know, the easiest way to deal with these plants is just to remove them from their roots and to get the material out of there, you know, entirely. A lot of the chemical treatments don't really fare well with water, so they don't, you know, hold as well. They tend to be pretty, you know, time intensive. So you cut the plant, you'd have to treat each one of the plants individually. Any kind of broadcast application of an herbicide within a waterway is very frowned upon by all agencies involved. State agencies at least, Army Corps tends to not be concerned with that sort of thing, but. Certainly, you know, State Water Board and California Department of Fish and Wildlife would be. So if that were to be considered, it certainly is something that could be introduced to a later date, you know, by an amendment or a request for an amendment with CDFW. You would then have to consider, you know, under SEQA and with State Water Board, if those agents, if if the CD, or excuse me, if the State Water Board would need to get involved from a water quality point of view. And then whether or not it would need to sort of be an amendment or an addendum at least to the SEQA document. So not out of the question, but not currently considered would be the sort of simple summary of that point.
Then you may have answered this, but I'm not sure. So let's say if you start on May first, end to end, when do you think you'd be done?
That's actually a better question for public works. As quickly as their work crews can get through it, I think, you know, maybe Don could address that question more directly.
So so the work that's going to be performed is going to be performed by our staff, not your staff. Okay.
Correct. Okay, that is correct. It's not going to be Rincon staff. The Rincon's involvement will be as the biological monitor, sort of assisting the city in implementing the best management practices. Including, you know, the pre-construction surveys, the biological monitoring, if any kind of captured relocation needed to occur with turtles.
So before we move on to the next question, Mr. Villafana, do you want to address? Councilperson's Gama question.
Right, thank you. Thank you, Eric. It was great, great presentation. I think everybody can see how involved a process this is. It would be done with a combination of our own crews and contracting it out. I don't know how much. We'd have to see where we are personnel wise at that time, but certainly to begin expediting it, we're going to start with our own crews. And. We're going to contract part of it out. So it'll be it'll be that combination to do it. And and certainly we're looking to expedite it as soon as possible. That would be our goal.
Thank you. Councilperson Hernandez.
Yeah, actually, do you mind? I don't feel like I fully addressed Councilmember Gama's questions. You'd asked a couple more in there that I wanted to make sure that I got to as well. Okay. So absolutely, it is end to end, as you mentioned and noted, I was agreeing with you as you were asking. As far as the question of, you know, if we encountered sort of an unanticipated vegetation that might need removal, like say a dead tree. It couldn't just be moved by default, you know, under this current permit, the activity is specifically for vegetation removal from the channel itself. Dead trees wouldn't necessarily fall within the channel. But that said, it would not take a very significant amendment and coordination with CDFW to include something like a dead tree that may be discovered during the process. So that could be included in the agreement later down the road within that five-year period if it became recognized as being needed. It would basically just be a minor modification to the activity. Yeah, and then finally, I think your last question was just a general understanding of the process. You were right in what you said, essentially, it's a five-year agreement, a five-year permit for all intents and purposes. At the end of that five years, then you sort of have a default opportunity for an extension. Doesn't really warrant, you know, your approval. It's just you would notify the extension if you needed it. After which time you would then need to conduct another analysis, biological assessment. And apply for a further five-year permit, and then you could continue to extend that every five years under that same process. So, yeah, it's very well structured and, you know, just direct coordination with CDFW. So within that five-year permit, however, you basically conduct your activity when you need to with just a simple notification and a fee payment. I think it is like about three hundred and forty-five dollars is the fee each year that you need to do the activity.
Thank you for your presentation and your work for our city. Appreciate it very much.
You're very welcome. Our pleasure.
Councilperson Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor Rollins, and thank you, Mr. Shadford. Your presentation is very enlightening and it's quite an involved process as we've learned. This question, I think, is for Mr. Villa Fana. I I think some of my other questions got answered in the in the. Questions that Councilman Gama asked, but Mr. Villa Fana, can you tell me what residents and park? Users will be experiencing, what kind of impact the work will have on people who frequent the park? Will the park be closed in sections or entirety? Will there be lots of heavy equipment? What can we expect residents to see?
It'll be sectionalized work. We'll be closing sections of the of the of the park. We will not close the whole park. We will. Quarter off. Areas for safety, parallel to the stream and probably a hundred feet on either side. So there'll be times when the right across the street from the Surfside Public Works Yard. Where that path, that walkway, that will be closed during part of the. The removal process. And then that'll be moved farther down. There'll be sections of the. Of the path that'll be closed at various times while we work in that area for safety reasons and for logistics. So it'll it'll be in, we'll be notifying, we'll be putting flyers out, we'll be posting. Information on signs along the route as far as when there's closures planned. And we'll also post, of course, on social media.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question.
Seeing no other questions from our councilpersons, I had a few. And one is a follow-up to Councilperson Hernandez. Bubbling Spring Park in particular. Is heavily used for youth baseball. And I don't know what that hundred-foot radius would be. Would that? Would that affect or could that be coordinated so it doesn't affect their baseball season so they'd have to shut down because of work being done?
Oh, no, we're going to coordinate with all the park users to minimize the impact, of course. You know, I just, I put a hundred feet out there, you know, it may be fifty feet. We have to look and see. And certainly one side maybe. May not need as much area coordinated off as the other side, depending on how we can work on from one side rather than the other. But certainly we're going to coordinate, we're going to give plenty of advance notice. And when we're going through the bubbling springs park where the ball fields are, we would be coordinating with the Little League. You know, program to make sure that we minimize any impact. We work outside game hours, et cetera. So now we're well aware of that and we do plan to, you know, work with the users to minimize the impact.
Okay, and this is just kind of a general question. We all are aware that like it, the reason why we're doing is is because, you know, the reeds are well overgrown. How often? And when was the last time that we cleared the the weeds per se or the the vegetation? And looking forward on a kind of a a long-term maintenance, how often should they be? Dealt with so that they don't get to the level that they're at right now?
When I came onboard the city, and it'll be almost five years. The permit had lapsed. And it was a lengthy process to get this going again. What I did under emergency conditions. Were to use the probation crews and our crews to clear limited areas downstream of the bridges to minimize. You know, flooding. So that's what we've been doing for the last several years. And of course, that's limited. We could not use any equipment. All the reed removal that we did under an emergency. Permit was had to be by hand and it had to be, there had to be a forecasted rain event before we could go in there. I could not clear reeds under an emergency permit in July. It would have to be in after October. And we did that several times. So what the good thing is, we are going to have this permit. It's going to be good for five years. And we're going to have a program now where we're going to go on there in there on an annual basis. And remove the reeds and and the overgrowth before the rainy season. So and then in year four, we would start the process again. This process again to get another five-year extension. With the with the idea is never to let it lapse again.
Okay, so then, and I think I understood every year you're going to do kind of an ongoing maintenance once a year, just so we keep this at bay.
Exactly, but we can, with this permit, we'd be able to do it. You know, schedule it out. We would, we could do it in the, you know, during the summer. And as long as we have the biologist there to make sure that we're not impacting the pond turtles or nesting birds. You could actually do the work, the removal, even when there's nesting birds. As Eric had said, we just have to put a buffer up around that area where we find nesting birds. So we can be removing reeds in areas where there are no nesting birds. And then as soon as those nesting birds, if there are any, have left, we can take care of those reeds. So we can have, you know, we have much more flexibility with this permit to get the work done. But we will have to have the services of Rincon to be there to provide the biological oversight when we're doing this.
So so on the biological inspection, I know you noticed a certain amount of birds and and turtles that were there. Because it got to the level that it is, did we eliminate? Or was there a potential that we might have eliminated any biological species because it got overgrown? Or is that just conjecture?
Yeah, I mean, in reality, it's actually the opposite. The the overgrowth of vegetation kind of provides opportunities for species to to, you know, find little nooks and crannies to live in. The ducks like to nest in those reeds and, you know, even if it's a, it's a very interesting process. So it's the the United States Migratory Bird Treaty Act. It's actually a treaty between four nations. So it's Canada, the US, Russia and Mexico. That act is one of the more extensive and protective acts of nesting birds. It even covers some things like non-native ducks or what would be considered a non-native duck here in Port Juaniemi. So certainly have a number of those around the project site. They could potentially become a concern and a little bit of a constraint if they start, you know, if we find them nesting in amongst the weeds. The the reeds also tend to provide places for the turtles to hang out and hide in. So it attracts them and it can also make them difficult to detect. So once we get all that vegetation cleared out, subsequent years in this permitting term. Will actually likely be much more streamlined and run more smoothly.
Okay, well, thank you. With no other questions, thank you for this detailed report. I never knew how much, you know, went into like what would people would think, the public would think simply removing the weeds. But obviously, it's a very intensive process and you seem very, very knowledgeable on all the different. Dot dotting the i's and crossing the t's to make this thing happen. So thank you very much.
Yeah, you're very welcome. And thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. It's Rincon's pleasure to work with the city. We look forward to.
Before you, before you leave, Councilperson Martinez, you had a question.
Yes. Just a thumbs up.
I'm sorry, Mayor Prochem Martinez.
I just wanted to say thanks for the presentation. And, you know, it was, it wasn't a question. It was just a thumbs up. But thank you.
I saw that. Thank you very much. You're very welcome.
Very good. Okay, well, well, thank you again, and we will now move on to our next report, and that's the green equipment grants. Report by Mr. Cable.
Okay, good evening, city council staff and the general public. I'm going to share my screen now. Second. All right, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So this is Charles Cable, Principal Engineer for the City of Port Juaniemi Public Works Department. This presentation will focus on the recent CARB roadshow that was featured here at the city late last year and some of the things we learned. CARB stands for the California Air Resources Control Board. So I'm going to present what the roadshow was and how we leveraged it with our landscape maintenance division. The tools that were provided and its effectiveness, some of the challenges that we faced, the new regulations and its impacts. Any potential rebates and incentives. And what's next for the landscape maintenance division with respect to electrification? Since twenty eighteen, CARB has operated the zero emission equipment roadshow, which loans the equipment free of cost for three weeks to municipalities and other entities that express interest. There were approximately fifty pieces of professional equipment from eight different manufacturers included in the roadshow. We contacted CARB to schedule the roadshow just before the pandemic in February twenty twenty. The roadshow was shut down for more than a year. And finally, this past summer, we were able to schedule the roadshow to visit our city in November. From November eighth to December ninth, the American Green Zone Alliance, AGZA, delivered a trailer full of electric equipment. AGZA is contracted by CARB to help municipalities make the transition away from gas-powered small equipment. Including training staff and using the equipment and best practices. This picture was taken November eighth and the president of AGZA can be seen here providing instruction to landscape maintenance crews on how to use the equipment. So multiple brands were used from several manufacturers. This is important because staff is able to see which brands were performing and which ones were lacking. A survey was conducted and feedback collected at the end of the roadshow. Employees across the board felt the string trimmers, edgers, head trimmers. And self-propelling push lawn mowers were highly rated and acceptable alternatives to gas. Similarly, any type of blower or chainsaw scored poorly regardless of brand. So the big takeaway is that technology is improving and as time passes, it will only continue to improve. We think that the chainsaws and the blowers will eventually catch up, but at this point, it doesn't perform as well as some of the lighter equipment. So why convert to zero emission equipment? Well, there are a lot of pros to going electric. There's no fuel to buy or mix, no mistakes made in the mixture. We have reduced noise and lower vibration. It's better for the environment. It will be mandated in a couple of years, twenty twenty four. In addition, the employees felt that the string trimmers, the edgers, head trimmers and push mowers were all successful in completing the workload. Employees rated them highly and sometimes even prefer them over existing gas. Some of the challenges we faced was with the power. We witnessed that the chainsaws provided could not cut the larger trunks or tree trunks. They fared well with some of the smaller trunks. The weight of the batteries, some of the workers found wearing the backpack batteries could be taxing for long periods of time. There could be ergonomic issues. The runtime of the blowers, the blowers did not last for full day's work when compared to gas. The batteries also presented an uncertain expense as the crews did not know how many batteries to carry or if they needed multiple. The other thing was this, the zero emission commercial grade equipment tends to cost more than parallel gas-powered equipment. So if we look at transitioning, we have to account for the increased cost. There's new regulations, as most probably heard, in October, Governor Newsom signed an executive order to ban the sale of new gas-powered equipment using small off-road engines. Which includes all landscape equipment, pressure washers and generators by twenty twenty four. We will eventually have to eliminate our landscape equipment fleet and any replacement will likely have to be electric. For comparison purposes, CARB states that running a gas lawnmower. For comparison purposes, CARB states that running a gas lawnmower for an hour is equivalent of driving 300 miles. Or using a gas leaf blower for an hour emits as much pollution as a Toyota Camry driving 1,100 miles. This doesn't mean we have to vacate our fleet. We just won't be able to purchase any in California. It'll be limited. Manufacturers won't be able to sell gas-powered equipment in 2024. So as as our equipment fails, we have to look at alternative electric replacements. So rebates, grants, and incentives. Most incentive programs are run by local air quality management districts. The Ventura County Air Pollution Control District administers a financial incentive program right now called the Clean Air Fund. It's somewhat known that Santa Paula applied for this this fund and they were able to obtain $60,000 to completely convert their landscape fleet back in 2018. The fund is still available and applications are being accepted until March of this year. I spoke with the Ventura County Air Pollution Control District representative, and they informed me that the state is also developing a statewide incentive program to help municipalities transition. So there might be more grants and funds in the future. So we just need to be checking that periodically. So what we learned and what's next for our division, the city landscape maintenance division will eventually have to phase out all small, small gas or diesel-powered engines when when appropriate and as technology improves. When we go electric, we're going to want to stick with a limited number of brands to ensure compatibility, maintenance, and parts availability. We're going to want to utilize smart charging boards. It's the key to maintaining battery health and avoiding overloaded circuits. We've found that Still and Husqvarna carries every tool that our landscape crews currently use. And looking at a total replacement of all our landscape equipment, we estimate between 30 and 35 K right now. The important thing to note here is that technology is only improving. And as we wait, we're going to see manufacturers come out with better, better products over time. Husqvarna has a mobile app for commercial users that will track last known locations of each electric tool, as well as monitor performance and keep maintenance records. With that, I'll take any questions.
I see no questions. Thank you.
Councilmember.
Oh, no, we are. I'm sorry. We do have a council, Councilperson Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor Rollins. Thank you, Mr. Cable, for that excellent presentation. I I'm real interested in it since I sit on the Ventura County Regional Energy Alliance. And I look forward to sharing what you guys did in November with the rest of the group. How far, my question is, how far are we in acquiring non-diesel-generated equipment? Do we have a supply on hand right now or are we just slowly acquiring it?
So our, our process is going to be replaced as needed. So right now, we don't have we don't have any electric equipment. We've only done the roadshow just to test out the equipment. And that that was concluded last month. And I I met with AGZA, and when they picked up the equipment, they said that they were willing to come back later this year and let us try out their equipment again. They also wanted to do a PR program with our our crews because they were really happy with the feedback they got from our crews. So we might look at doing that. They also mentioned, because he had insider knowledge about the manufacturers, that improved technology was coming out. So they were going to send us a chainsaw to test out because we we let them know that the chainsaw wasn't performing up to par. But they were very encouraging about improved technology.
Very good. So I imagine when we see the public works budget come before us for the next budget cycle, we will see an increase in costs for equipment?
We will. We did budget for replacing equipment because some of it is, a lot of it is older. So there will be an increased cost, maybe in the mid-year budget adjustment if we elect to go with electric equipment. Yes, but we're also going to try to look at obtaining some of these grants, too.
Excellent. Great. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I I just had one. First of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Cable, of like doing the research and being forward-thinking as far as moving us ahead in this area. I think pollution is a a big concern, obviously. And and like some of the research has shown that a lot of the gardening equipment and stuff like that are big polluters. I also, from recent conversations, I know replacing it for electric equipment is very expensive. I've heard that to replace a battery is as much as replacing the entire piece of equipment in some cases. So I guess we're going to need to look forward on that. But and I I would encourage staff to kind of work with, you know, communicate with the city of Santa Paula. And I think now I'm on the air pollution compartment, the city of Ojai is moving in that direction also to see how successful they are. Councilperson Gama.
Thank you, Mayor Rollins. Yeah, I just wanted to make the point that the gas blowers present the greatest risk to life safety. And even if you can't achieve the optimum power that you need, I think the blowers are the area that are most provide the most life exposure to our employees. So and I have a blower that I use every Saturday when we blow off the Alaska Memorial. And the battery just failed, so it lasted four years. Now I get a solid two hours out of it. And pretty consistent. But when I went to buy a new battery, the new battery was $199. And I could buy a new upgraded blower for $152 that comes with the battery. So, you know, going green is important, and I get it, particularly when it comes to life safety. And these blowers on the backs of employees, an employee with asthma, I mean, they really are are not good. So I would hope that we could get the blower situation squared away. But it is, hopefully, technology is driving this pretty good. And I just wanted to mention the brand that I have and have been pretty satisfied with is R Y B O I Ride Boy. And I didn't see that in your trial products, but maybe you take a look at that. Give it a try. But I think the blower that I have, it works very well. Like I said, the battery lasted four years and the battery is more expensive than a new blower. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Just one additional, it's become a badge of honor for tennis players and for pickleball players to bring their electric blowers to the court to blow off the leaves and the things, which not only is provides good volunteer support, but I think the community in in general is very conscious of the need to do this. Thank you again for the presentation. We will now move on to the consent calendar agenda. And just from my knowledge, city clerk, do I need to go through each one of these things and the recommendation before we make a vote? Or do I do that one at a time?
Sir, yeah, you can collectively read the entire consent calendar, including the titles and the recommendations for each. And then we'll take one roll call vote at the at the end.
Okay, so I got my drink of water. Here we go. Number four, we now have the consent gender a calendar. Number four is receive and file the finance cash disbursements from December 14th through January 11th, 2022. The recommendation is to receive and file those disbursements. Number five, adopt resolution reflecting reported employer-paid member contributions. There are two recommendations. Number one is to adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Port Wayne, Nimi regarding paying and reporting the value of employer-paid member contributions, parentheses, E M P C, for classic employees of the unrep of the unrepresentative executive management and management and professional employees group, A N D. And the number two recommendation is to adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Port Wayne, Nimi regarding paying and reporting this the value of employer-paid member contributions, parentheses, E M P C, for all classic sworn and non-s sworn employees of Port Wayne, Nimi, of the Port Wayne Police Association. Number six, approve modifications of existing contract with MB Chang and Associates for interim human resources management services. The recommendation is to approve the contract modifications to the services agreement with MB Chang and Associates. Number seven, authorize an award to J and H Engineering General Contractors Incorporated for the Wayne, Nimi Bay Alley Grind and Overlay Phase Two. Recommendation is to authorize the city manager to award a contract to J and H Engineering General Contractors Incorporated for the grind and overlay portions of eight alleys in the Wayne, Nimi Bay community as identified in the presented plan. Number, just real quick, is there going to be a presented plan tonight or just? Okay.
It's attached to the report.
Okay. Number eight is authorize to purchase sewer and storm drain cleaning unit. The recommendation is to approve the purchase of a 2022 back-on sewer and storm drain combination cleaning unit in the amount of $486,683.54, utilizing the cooperative purchasing agreement through the Sourcewell Contract Number 101221-BAC. So there is a recommended, do ever, may I have a motion to set, a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar?
Mayor Rollins, may I ask for item five and six to be set aside so that I have a question or two on those? And then I'd like to make a motion to approve all other items on the consent calendar.
Okay, so duly noted motion, number six and seven will be pulled from the.
No, five and six.
Five and six, I'm sorry. Five and six. And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Can we take a roll call vote on that portion right at this point?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Martinez?
Yes.
And Mayor Rollins?
Yes. Okay, so now, Councilman Gama, can you please?
Thank you, Mayor Rollins. On a number five, adopting a resolutions reflecting and reported employer-paid member contributions, I imagine that's for retirement CalPERS. And I was hoping that at some point in time, we would get a comprehensive report on where we are with our unfunded retirement liability and how we closed out this latest fiscal year and and how are we now? So could, could we get a brief explanation of what exactly we're agreeing to here on adopting these revolutions reflecting the reported employer-paid member contributions? I do know that it's going up from seven to, I believe, eight percent. And I believe that was mandated by CalPERS. So just looking for a little more information to to help us understand the retirement system and problems associated with it.
Okay, so Mrs. Sero, you're the reporter of this. Can you make a presentation?
Good evening. Absolutely. Lupita Sero, interim finance director. And what we're attempting to do here is just to update the resolution with CalPERS to reflect the actual percentage of employer, employer-paid member contributions. We had not updated the resolution with CalPERS. So we are just updating both the management and professional employees group and also the sworn and non-s sworn employees resolutions with the current eight percent and nine percent as stated on the resolutions.
So we've been paying eight percent, but we haven't had the resolution to change it officially.
We did not have the resolution filed with CalPERS using their template. They have a specific template that they, that they want us to use. And so that's what we're attempting to do with this.
Do you know, I know we have four categories and they're all mentioned in one and two of employee groups, sworn, non-s sworn, management, and unrepresented employees. Do you have any information regarding the unfunded liability with each group? I know that it's done on a fiscal year and CalPERS issues an actuarial report. Have we, do we have any of that information you could share with us tonight?
I don't have it in front of me, but we do have the reports through fiscal year 2021.
Okay.
So we can, if we want to agendize those reports so that information for the next meeting, I can have that. I can prepare that.
That'd be great. So just to be clear then, we have been paying the eight percent. And we budgeted eight percent, but we're just bringing the resolution up to the amount that we've been statutorily required to pay?
We're bringing the resolution, the CalPERS, right, the resolution using the CalPERS template.
Okay, so I, that was a poor question. I apologize. So let me just ask straight out. We have been paying eight percent as required by CalPERS, right?
We have been paying eight percent since June 30th, 2007. The actuarial report back as of June 30th reflects the eight percent.
Okay, so again, I just want to make a comment that we need to focus on this issue more. We had a, anyways, it speaks for itself, and I hope that we could dive deep into this unfunded liability here in the future. Thank you.
Is that all of your questions?
Yes.
Did you, you had, you had wanted to hold up, I think, number six?
Yeah, I was just looking for a little bit more information on this contract. Is the person working full-time?
Excuse me, councilmembers and Mayor Rollins, perhaps we take the vote as to item number five before moving on discussion of item six.
Okay, so since all the questions have been asked on number five, may I?
I'll make a motion to approve number five.
Okay. We have a second. Second by Mayor Protem Martinez. Can we have a vote, Madam Clerk?
Member Gama?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Rollins?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so to follow up on number six?
Yes, I'm sorry. I don't think my booklet has number six. I haven't been able to find the the supporting data in my agenda. So I apologize for that, but maybe just a brief overview on what it is we're actually approving?
Sure. The item number six pertains to a request to modify an existing contract with MB Chang and Associates. Currently, we're using MB Chang and Associates for the provision of interim HR manager services. We have a vacancy in that authorized full-time position. And we're using a temporary staffing service firm that has the capability providing us with an interim HR manager. So that was opened in early December. And we're now asking pursuant to our procurement policy for council's authorization to increase the total amount of that contract, adding $50,000, $55,000 for a total contract amount of $75,000.
Thank you.
Okay. I had one question just real quick on number six. How long will, how many months will that amount of money extend our, our contract with them, or we're hoping?
So as a. So as a contract employee, the individual doesn't get paid for holidays or days off. So should time be taken off, that would extend the contract, but in rough numbers, that should get us approximately four months.
And then in the interim, will this person also be, or will, you know, the recruitment for a permanent public, I mean, personnel person be done during that time?
That's correct, Mayor. The intent is that the term of this extension on the contract will be consistent and concurrent with the executive recruitment for the full-time H R manager position.
And just, so I don't, Mayor Protem Martinez, did that answer your questions? I saw you make a little motion. Okay, great. Okay, so may I have a motion and second to approve item number six of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Ma- Madam Clerk, will you please take a roll call vote for this item?
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Rollins?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, we are now moving on to number nine in the agenda. The special use permit number three thirty dash twenty-one for the Darvita cannabis event. The hearing is now open at eight thirty-six P M, according to my watch. Do any members or council of the council have any conflicts to disclose at this time? Okay. Madam Clerk, do you have proof of publication as required by law? Do we have a complete file of the reports and exhibits?
Yes, sir.
Great. Will staff, well, Tony Stewart, our staff, please present the report?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the council, staff and audience. This is Tony Stewart, Community Development Director. And our item here this evening is a public hearing for S U P thirty dash twenty-one, which is a request from Dan Perez, representing Darvita for a series of cannabis events. May I have the next slide, please? So as the council and staff, the audience may recall, Darvita successfully held a smaller cannabis event in beach parking lot C back in December. And at the time that the applicant had made his original request, staff had recommended that he have a event that was limited to parking lot C, just to see how things would play out, see if it would be successful. And then at that time, if it did turn out to be successful, that he applied for a new special use permit that would allow him to expand and or allow additional dates for his subsequent events. So what the applicant is proposing now is a larger event. It would be held in parking lots B and C, as well as Long Ocean View Drive. Four events are proposed, March twenty-fourth, actually be twenty-fifth to the twenty-seventh, June eighteenth, nineteenth, September tenth and eleventh, and December third and fourth. The, the public notice at the time mentioned that there would be, each event would be three days. However, the applicant has since decided not to have any of the V I P dinners that were originally proposed on Friday evenings and therefore just have, as was done with the last event. The events be on Saturdays from eleven A M to nine P M and Sundays from noon to seven P M, with the last cannabis sales occurring half an hour before closing, so eight thirty and six thirty P M. And the vendors would be allowed to come in on Fridays and set up and, and take down on Mondays. Next slide, please. So the applicant is now proposing approximately two to four thousand attendees per day. As per previous, no one under twenty-one would be allowed to attend the events. There would be cannabis and non-cannabis vendors, plus food vendors throughout the event area. On-site consumption would be allowed, again, only in completely enclosed and filtered lounge or tents. And those would also be secure with security. There will be a D J set up in lot B, however, there would be a series of smaller speakers throughout the event so that the sound is more focused and therefore you don't have to have a loud, single speaker broadcasting over the entire event area. Therefore, hopefully, it'll be a little bit quieter than the previous event. Next slide, please. The applicant will be providing his own security. He'll have guards at the entrance to the event, which will be at Ocean View Drive, at the consumption lounges and also strolling throughout the event area. Attendees, we'll be checking by the guard at the entrance to the event. No outside cannabis, alcohol, or any kind of food or beverage will be allowed. The event will comply with all COVID restrictions in, in place at the time. There will be a point-of-sale system that will track all sales with the state's metric point-of-sale system. And as before, five percent of gross revenues from the cannabis sales will be paid towards the city's general fund and additional one percent will be paid towards local charities and nonprofits of each of the cannabis vendors' choice. Next slide, please. So this is a site plan showing the, the layout. As you can see up on the top area where Ocean View intersects with Surfside Drive, a setback just a little bit into Ocean, Ocean View Drive would be the main entrance. Located along Ocean View Drive, the, the little ovals that you see throughout are actually the food trucks. And then the rest of the vendors would be non-cannabis vendors along Ocean View Drive. And parking lots B and C would be where the mix of non-cannabis and cannabis vendors would be, as well as the consumption lounges. Next slide, please. As you probably are aware, S U Ps are required for these types of events being proposed at Huaynimi Beach Park. These type of events meaning that they're, they gather large crowds and we have to address parking noise, et cetera. However, the events are considered exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act or CEQA. Next slide, please. As I mentioned with regard to the fiscal impact, a minimum of five percent of the sales from the cannabis businesses will be going towards the city's general fund. There will be revenue from the use of the city's paid parking spaces, and this would be Friday, Saturday, Sunday and Monday for parking lots B and C, as well as the, the parking spaces being used by the event goers. And then the applicant will also need to pay for all costs incurred by city staff and resources. And one thing I didn't point out was because we've got vendors that'll be staying overnight and visitors coming into town, we expect that additional revenues will generate for our hotels, as well as other, as well as other businesses here in the city, such as restaurants and whatnot. Next slide, please. So at this point, it's recommended that the city council adopt a resolution that conditionally approves S U P number thirty dash twenty-one. I'm here to answer any questions, as is, I believe, Chief Salinas. The applicant, Dan Perez, is here, and I believe he'd like to show a very brief video of the last event that he held. And so if that's uploaded, if I could go ahead and have that go, then I'll go ahead and turn it over to the questions at that point. Thank you. Charles, will be able to play the actual video?
Yeah, Tony, I need just, just a moment to pull it out.
Okay. I know we were all looking at the mayor and just wanted to make sure that we were going to be, hopefully, seeing the video at some point.
Could we get a couple of questions in in this dead time? How, how long do you think it's going to be before we see this movie?
I'll have it up in about thirty seconds, Mayor.
Okay, let's, let's wait. The silence is deafening.
Job as a community, like getting together, like, I don't want to say last second, but we had like three weeks to get this thing going. So I'm super proud of all of us getting together. You guys coming in three weeks and being able to make this event happen is amazing. And we just had so many people like chipping in from the community and it just goes to show like how awesome of a community we have, especially in the cannabis community. And I think merging cannabis and food is like the perfect bond ever. So I'm super excited for what this event has to come in like the future, a couple of months. I, I heard a springtime. Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you, Charles, and I believe that was it. So at this point, like I said, I'm available for any questions, as is the applicant, Mr. Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Councilman Gama?
Thank you, Mayor Rollins. So I, I'm having a little bit of problem with this. And I do, my, my concerns, last time I voted no, but my concerns was that they were going to have a hard time containing the cannabis smell within the tents. And I was, I was very much surprised at how well that, that worked. So that concern didn't materialize. But one of the things I did notice was in the report, it says all participants will be required to pay for parking. And that's an area that I think we are deficient in because the organizer of the event can't require people to pay for parking. People are, are asked to go to a machine and pay for parking. And I visited the event three times. The first time was as they were setting up, because I was there for beach cleanup. And at the conclusion of beach cleanup, which was about ten A M, I only counted the cars on Ocean View that didn't buy a parking pass, and I counted eighteen of them. So, and then I know that the parking lot, I came back later in the afternoon and I didn't go out of my way to, to survey each car, but a high percentage of the cars in parking lot B did not have the parking passes. So, you know, to say that the event was one hundred percent successful, I disagree with because the city, one of the aspects of this is for the city to generate parking revenue. And if we don't have an active enforcement of getting that parking revenue, then we lose out on it. And then the other thing that, I, I don't, I don't think our beach should be associated with smoking marijuana. I think our beach should be associated with wellness, and there are some wellness aspects to marijuana use. I just feel like it would be better placed in a fixed location and not necessarily the beach. And I, I do have a big concern for Surfside Two residents. You know, now, we, we, the music was quite loud last time. The speakers were pointed at Surfside Two. And so now we're going to block the whole street off, parking lot B, and, and I just, I just don't think it's a good location for a cannabis consumption event. I do agree that the last event was very well managed. I, I'll give you that. I think merging food trucks and cannabis, excellent idea for obvious reasons. But we are still in a pandemic and what, and I, I'm being one hundred percent honest with everybody tonight. When I walked into those three tents and people were taking hits of wax, weed, bong hits, there were people blowing out big clouds of smoke, coughing. And I'm like, I felt, for the first time, I felt I was at risk of, of contracting COVID because I'm in a tent that's got confined circulation and people are exhaling big hits of weed and I'm breathing it in my lungs. So I'm not sure that at this point in time, this is a good idea. And I just want to, to know, how will you get required parking permits paid for? What, what's the plan? And then also, I would all, and I, I did ask for us to have a public debriefing so we could discuss these things, and I never was afforded that. But one of the things that I think might be something to consider would be to require the event manager to pay for our parking enforcement aspect of the city so that we could generate the most revenue from parking that were due. And if people don't pay those parking fees, they get a ticket. And so that's one of the things I wanted to have a public discussion on, but we never got debriefed publicly. So that, those are my concerns and, and I, I would, like I said, I, I think I think the parking issue is, is my big issue is that we need, if we're going to say in this report that participants will be required, and I'm reporting, I'm quoting from this report, required to buy a parking pass, well, how are you going to make sure that they satisfy that requirement?
Thank you. Any other comments at this point? From any of the other council persons?
Oh, there you are. That was a question. How are we going to maintain that people are going to be required to pay for parking when last time around it was an honor system? And I pointed out that there's many people not participated in the honor system.
Okay, Mr. Stewart, do you have a response to that?
Sure. So we will make sure that the applicant, as part of his flyers and brochures, mentions paid parking. Now, previously, as council may be aware, we are, and currently, we are down to one parking enforcement officer. She works Monday through Friday. She doesn't work events or weekends without overtime for the eighteen or so parking passes that were not paid for. That would certainly not be equivalent to the pay that we'd have to provide to our parking enforcement officer.
Mr. Stewart, Mr. Stewart, I, I, the event was a ten-hour event. I am not, so if you do the math, there was a lot of, there wasn't just eighteen people not paying for, for parking. You know, I'm just, I counted eighteen cars at ten A M and I left at ten forty, so.
Well, if I may continue, we will go ahead and ask our parking enforcement officer for the March event if this is approved, if she's willing to maybe switch per hours, where we don't have to pay overtime. However, we are also currently recruiting for a new parking enforcement officer. This new person's hours would be a weekend's holidays and whatnot, so they'd be expected to work such events. And we would expect to have that person on board for the remaining events throughout the rest of the year with the focus during these events to be down at the beach area monitoring the parking. So that is something.
I just want to make one more comment and then I'll mute myself. I've said it many, many times before, we hear complaints about our, how aggressive we are with parking enforcement Monday through Friday, and then the weekend comes and we're not aggressive at all. And I don't have a problem with us being aggressive on street sweeping days, but I do have a problem when we have an event and we have thousands of people coming to our city and that we're not there to, to make sure we generate as much revenue as possible. So that's, that's the problem I have with this event. So thank you.
Councilperson Perez?
Yes, I'm just going to make a comment. I don't have a question. So I do think that the parking for the weekends is an issue, and I hope that we can get someone in place to take care of that and to handle the events. And I'm sure the city staff is doing the best they can to find someone to handle that. To follow up, the beach is the prime location for events. It's the only location we have for events. I'm not necessarily in favor of this type of event, but as a city leader, this is where we are now, and this is a business decision, and it's good for business, and it's where we are as a marijuana-focused city. And so we have to be pragmatic, and that's all I have to say about it.
Thank you. Councilperson Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor Rollins, and thank you, Mr. Stewart, for your presentation and answering my list of questions that I sent to you yesterday. I, I am concerned about the number of events that we're going to hold out there, and I by no means, I, I agree. And I by no means, I agree totally with Councilwoman Perez about the fact that, you know, we have adopted cannabis in our city, and it would be disingenuous, I think, on our parts to discourage events. I think we need to support our cannabis businesses whose revenue and sales tax, sales tax revenue, we've enjoyed and it's helped us quite a bit. But I am concerned about the number of events out there and conflicting with others. So my question, other things that might be planned in the next year. So my question is, are our hands tied to these dates? We still don't know when the Banana Festival is going to be happening. I saw on the Port's website that it could be happening in September, but we don't have an exact date yet. If something happens where these two events might conflict, do we have the ability to change those dates?
First of all, in answer to your question, staff, before we even got to this point, try to ferret out any upcoming events throughout the year to make sure we didn't have any conflicts. Something as far out in September might be able to be moved around, but I'll go ahead and defer to our applicant, Mr. Perez, and he may be able to answer that a little bit more in more detail for you.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Yes, I had no problem moving the dates. It's just that it with, with fixed dates, it's easier for us to plan and also to promote for a successful event. And also too, I'd like to address Mr. Gama's concern about the parking. If, if you have no staff to work the weekend, then, then we could assign an event staff to make sure that anyone that parks, that they are paying. And what we can do is we have some position at the parking entrance. And actually, if need be, assign parking and make sure they go to the machines and post the, the ticket, paid ticket on their dash, their dashboard, to make sure that all the parking spaces are taken and paid for.
Yeah, the problem I have is that the report says, and I'm reading directly from the report, customers will also be required to purchase beach parking passes. So how are you going to ensure that requirement is met?
Yes, sir. Well, I, I had assumed that everyone in the honor system would just pay for their parking. But if that was not being done, then that's when, that's where I was saying that we could appoint a staff or security to stand at the entrance and actually designate parking spots and make sure that they are paid for before they leave the car and they put the ticket on the dash. Just like when you go to, like to a music park, like Disneyland, I'm thinking, for example, where they have one person at the entrance and they direct the car to another person who's holding an open stall or parking spot, and the individual pull into the parking spot, and that second staff member holding the parking spot will watch and make sure they go and purchase a ticket and put it on their dash or car window.
So what about the COVID concerns? I, again, I was generally frightened for myself when I was in the tent with a bunch of people breathing marijuana smoke in my face. And it just, to me, it's like, we have a mask mandate. We heard earlier about the numbers, and now we're going to force a bunch of people into a tent to consume marijuana and exhale and inhale in each other's faces. I just, I don't understand how we could be considering that at this time.
Well, okay, well, no one was forced to purchase the tickets, and no one actually has to go inside the consumption tents.
But there's a pandemic.
No, no, I'm saying that no one is forced.
We just heard, we just heard that you have to wear an N95 mask in a city building.
Correct. I'm just talking about the event itself. It's, you know, no one's forced to buy our tickets to go to the event. And if someone does attend the event, no one's going to be forced to go inside the consumption tents. You know, everyone just voluntarily goes into the tent.
All right. So, but again, do you agree that there's a legitimate concern here? I mean, we are all being told, we're, we're meeting in their home right now because we're not willing to meet in person in council chambers. Yet, we're going to approve an event where we're going to put 50 people in a tent and they're going to take their masks off and they're going to smoke marijuana. I just, I'm having a hard time with it.
Okay. Well, I don't know how to respond to that. The only you can say is last week, I think it was in Wall Street Journal, that they noted that cannabis prevents COVID. I wish I would have had the article so I could have responded to your question. So maybe everyone is benefit, benefiting by going inside the consumption tents.
Maybe Scott could research that in a quick minute.
Yes. It was, it was just last week that they, that was reported.
Then one other thing, I don't, I don't know if it's disingenuous for us to have concerns about our residents and people that frequent the beach, but there is an alternative location where there isn't a condominium complex bearing down on, on the event itself. And that would be at the, the other side of the beach on the drive up to the lighthouse. So I just think expanding the event, having consumption in front of Surfside Two, I just, I understand having our beach festival there and having kiddie rides. And I mean, I could understand the inconvenience, but also, you know, kind of fun to watch kids have a great time with their parents, but this is a little different. So anyways, thank you for your time and presentation.
Sure. And also too, I saw some of the residents sitting on their patios, and they're waving at the attendees, waving at us. They would come down and eat off the food trucks. So some, some of the residents that were actually sitting in their patios looked like they were enjoying the afternoon with all the attendees. Also too, we did make a point to go and invite at no charge to a lot of the residents. I'm not sure if they did attend or not, but again, I, I throughout both days, I saw residents actually sitting in their patios, and it looked like they were enjoying what was taking place.
Mayor Rollins, I have a comment.
Yes, Councilperson Perez.
I would just like to follow up that I don't think this is a danger to our community and its residents. It's being well-contained. Nobody's being put at risk. We haven't really had any complaints about the last event. And anyone who goes inside the tent is going in at their own risk. They're all grown adults, and if they so choose to go in and put themselves at risk, that's their choice. They're buying a ticket. You don't have to go in. And I think this is getting a little off track, and I think we just need to move forward.
Okay. I, any other questions from any of the other councilmen right now? Okay, I did have a few. One of the big pro points of doing this is that we're going to generate revenue. And I would request from city staff that we have a detail, a detailed outline as to how much money we made on last event and how much money we're, you know, and then at the end of this event, if we choose to, what, how much money we made from that over and above a normal weekend at the beach. We're talking about beach parking permits, money coming in. We have a number of cannabis operations already that sell cannabis. So how much extra money did we make because we ran this particular event? Because that's one of the big impetuses that we're being asked to promote this event. I did, when, I did also go to that last event twice. I'm glad that city staff is recognizing that the music needs to be redirected. It was blasting into like, you know, the local community there, and if they chose not to like to listen to that music, they really didn't have a choice. My other major concern is that we're, by approving this, and I don't know if we can make an amendment to approve this, but we're approving four events at this point in time. The last one was quite successful. I think like it was, I think it was successful from the standpoint of participation and also how it affected the community. However, this event that's being proposed more than doubles the, it more, more doubles the existing event that was done last time. We're using, we're, they're going to be utilizing that entire street, which they didn't use before. They're going to be using the entire parking lot B that was used for parking before, which now moves all that parking further to the west. I would feel more comfortable approving one event and seeing how that goes since the last event and this event are going to be completely different creatures as far as the size and the scope and the effect on the community. The final thing is, when somebody did make some notion, and if there was some way that we could include into this proposal, the idea of paying for a parking lot attendant. I heard that rather we don't have a parking lot attendant that works on the weekends, or hopefully we're going to be hiring somebody. But I would think that it would be mandatory that we do have a parking lot attendant during a high-use period of time. And I, I don't, I think the, being that the event is paying for police because of the added needed for police for this particular thing, I think parking is a, maybe that's something that should be added to it to pay for this person if we're going to be paying overtime and causing us extra expenses. Again, with the caveat that this is supposed to be raising us lots of money. Let's see, what other types of things? We talked about the fee four times a year, expanded use, let's see, closing the entire road, the amount of revenue. Okay, so those are my only comments. Mayor Rollins, Mayor Rollins, may I continue the discussion on parking? An alternative would be for the event organizer to sell tickets and include parking as a part of that ticket, which I would say $10. Remember, for the first time, we charged participants for the Wainimi Beach Festival $10, which you could have purchased an $8 parking pass for the entire day, but we chose to charge them $10. So one thing that would make me feel great is if we, for example, instituted a, a ticketing system where we know how many tickets are available, they sell them, part of the ticket cost would be $10 parking fee, and then they have a little thing they put on their dashboard as opposed to getting it from our machine. And then I have no issue with the parking. But for us to say in a staff report, people are going to be required, we required the participants that drove into Wainimi Beach Festival to pay $10 to park regardless where they parked. And on the second day, we had to make adjustments to that because we were overwhelmed with parking. So I'm really focused on one word, required, and I want to require each car that rolls into Wainimi Beach that they pay for parking. And so one alternative would be to go away from the honor system and do it as a part of a package. Okay. So we have staff.
Can I respond? Yes, can I respond to, to Councilman Gama? If you would allow us, the event staff, to take control of your parking lots, I think again, what we would do is we would position someone at the entrances, and we would just charge them $10 just to pull into the parking lot, just like you do again, like if you go to a concert or a festival or to the fairgrounds. And that way, each car that passes or enters that driveway will be charged $10. And at the same time, he's, the, the driver is charged $10, we'll give him a little ticket or a stub to throw on his dashboard, but there's no way he pass the entrance without paying the $10. And, and I think that's where you address the, the parking lot. And as far as the revenue, I have to apologize, this is the first event I've ever done, and I did not know that, after I talked to Mr. Stewart, I thought that they, all the vendors would, would know to pay the city. I was not aware of that until actually this morning. So then when I found out, I started reaching out, I already reached out to all the cannabis vendors, and I told them they ought to pay the 5% plus the 1%, and they're all cooperating and are doing it now. They're going to give all the numbers to, to myself and Mr. Stewart, and then they all said they would make the payments. So that was partly myself, but the next event, I definitely will make sure that at the end of the event, that everyone knows during, during, by next week, they have to pay the city that following week. I'll make sure that that's part of the application, that all, all vendors are aware of that too. And again, the reason I'm asking for both parking lots is in order to make this an excess. With more attendees, I could lower more vendors that will pay, and then they'll take up more parking spots. And the reason I'm asking for four dates is because it gives us more opportunity to promote the event, to bring the attendees. Because I realize, again, this is my first event, but what I realize is that I have to satisfy both sides. I have to satisfy the vendors that I'm going to bring them attendees. That's what they want. They want attendees, people to purchase. And then the attendees too, they want to see the vendors and merchants and all the food trucks. So that's, that's why, and again, my goal is yes, I want to bring the tax revenue to the city to show that these events are worth it, not only for the community, but also too for, for as far as tax revenue that goes back to the community. But that's why I'm asking for the four dates, so that the last event, I don't have three weeks to promote it. Now, now I'm asking for the one in March, at least I got three months. So now I know I could promote it properly and again, make it more of success. And then, and then, then, like I said, the three other event dates, the same time, it just allows us more time to promote properly, to have successful events, and, and make sure the vendors are pleased and happy, and the attendees are all happy and they can't wait for the next event, they want to come back to the next one.
Dan, you just made some news, and I want to make sure I heard you correctly.
Yes.
Did you say none of the vendors paid their 5% tax to the city with the last event? And then, did you also say that as of this morning, they're trying to reconcile that? Because in this staff report that we have before us and in the prior staff report we had specifically stated that we were receiving 5% of all, all sales generated by the cannabis supplier. So I just want to make sure that what I heard you say was correct.
Yes, sir, that was correct.
Okay, so, so we, we don't even have the means to judge whether that event was successful for the city or not. Because.
I, I know, well, I know the city was able to generate at least a parking place alone just from the, the event staff, $3,000.
Right, but I, but again, what I'm hearing you say is that the vendors did not know that they had to pay 5% to the city in their sales.
The vendors were aware of that, but I had assumed that they, they would just, I didn't know how that part was met. I thought maybe because they all had to have business licenses, and some of them already have existing business licenses, that especially the, the Port Nunez cannabis vendors, that they knew the, the protocol, that after all the sales are done, you go pay the city.
Well, we, we were told that they had their point-of-sale systems up and running and that it was going to be as seamless as if they were selling it out of Emerald Perspective on Pleasant Valley. So that, so what you're telling me is that's not true.
Well, no, the, the, well, first of all, the tracking trace system had to be up per the state. And as far as the sales, they know where their sales are. But as far as them getting it to the city, I, I just assumed that they knew to get it to the city. But this morning, like I said, when I became aware of it. But this morning, like I said, uh when I became aware of it, that no, they had, had not brought it to the city. Then I started reaching out to them. And, and all the, the six vendors, cannabis vendors that did participate, they all cooperated as soon as they said, you need to pay the city. And they, they all said okay, we're gonna give you our numbers and then we're gonna go uh pay the city. So what I'm saying is i- i- it is partly my fault because I never done an event like this and I just assumed that they somehow this is all uh all we taking care of with, with the city and it wasn't. But what I am saying is always that they are gonna pay and um I, I will definitely make sure that they do pay and follow up on it with the pay. And then the next, the, the event or the future events that I have, I definitely will make sure that this, this is addressed immediately, that uh uh before you can rent a space to a vendor, that they know that after the event, I mean, even thinking of putting like, you have five business days to get that money to the city. Uh, or I'm thinking maybe myself at the end of the event, get the total of the, of the revenue and then uh make sure that they get the, the money to, to the city. But I also believe too that they, these vendors are not out looking to rip off the city. They're looking, they want a, a, a great event, friendly event, and they wanna show to the city too that um how positive the event can turn out. So um, but again, yes, you, you, you are correct. Um, and, and again, that, that's, that's just my fault. But like I said, I, I, I will definitely correct that in the next event.
Yeah, well, again, um, successful is subject to interpretation. And like you said earlier, there's, there's three parties here that have to be satisfied. The, the vendors, the customers and the city council. And then I also, I guess there's four and also our residents. So um, you know, from what I just learned, um, it's a little disappointing. I'll, I'll just leave it at that. Um, Councilman, uh Mayor Protem Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor uh Rollins. Um, I do wanna say I, I am pro-business and, you know, approving these festivals, I think, are a good thing. But um I don't feel comfortable approving this, uh, at least these number of festivals, considering that we, we don't even know how much money we, we, we generated. I do also think that with COVID being present, you know, maybe having a slightly better health uh plan for those tents would, would be, would benefit everybody. I wasn't present at the festival, um, but I did hear some good things. And um about the only bad thing was that there was loud music, but I, I liked that you guys are addressing, but just, so you know, I don't, I don't necessarily feel comfortable approving it knowing that, you know, we just found out that we haven't, you know, we haven't seen how much money we, we got in. And I, I wanna ask uh City Manager Connors if he was aware that we didn't know if we, that we didn't have these numbers before us.
I'll defer to uh Mr. Stewart.
But thank you. Um, so we are working with the applicant, uh as Mayor or uh Councilmember Gama mentioned. Uh, the staff report that previously and currently uh required the five percent payment plus the one percent uh deterrentable organizations. Um, and for the six uh cannabis folks that were there or businesses that were at the last event are our own. So they're aware of our uh requirements here in the city. Um, and so we are working with uh Mr. Perez uh to get those actual figures um as far as the cannabis revenues that were provided um and uh reconcile the five percent payment. So we should have those numbers uh shortly as well as the payments uh coming in uh uh to the city.
I'd like to make a motion to um reject this application so that we could uh address those, the concern and that it come back and um we vote on it then.
I'll second.
Mayor Gama, can you repeat that? My internet is, I mean, I'm sorry, Councilor Gama, can you repeat that? My internet cut out. I didn't hear you.
I just wanted to, um, in light of this new information, in light of that we apparently have a flawed staff report using the word required, successful. I don't think we could um describe the event from the city perspective as successful if we don't, if we don't even know how much five percent tax was generated from the event. So my motion is to not approve this, but to have it come back and have all those questions answered, the parking, the, the five percent, and then um reconsider it at a later date. Okay, so there is a first and a second. Now we have some um question, uh some comments, uh Councilperson Hernandez.
I thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I just, I'm concerned about the um, the order in which we're going since we've not yet heard from the public. Uh, we have not received any public comment on moving forward with this motion. Um, my concern is um that if this report, uh and the recommendations do get approved, I'd like to make sure that we're not, uh, that we have a way out if, for instance, the first March event does not go as well as, as um expected. I would like us to be able to um cancel the second event until things can be corrected. I don't want us to be tied into four dates. So that's, that's my area of concern right now that I'd like to see addressed.
Yeah, I, I'll just make one comment, kind of like piggybacking on what you said. Um, initially, I was very much concerned about approving four events when the first event in its, in its essence went very smoothly. Uh, however, this is expanding it like twofold, so that's my one concern. Uh, th- there seems to be some ambiguity as to whether or not we can have a staff person dealing with the parking, and that's another major source of revenue. Uh, number three, I'm concerned that the, the city staff in general, we don't have a comprehensive report to see how we did financially on this anyway, be it parking, obviously now a, a new enlightenment, the sales or whatever. Uh, so um.
I have no, you know what? I have no doubt that we're going to get that revenue. I asked about it in my list of questions to Mr. Stewart this um yesterday when I sent them to him. Uh, we expected we'd have that information tonight, but I don't, you know, I don't see what the harm is of moving forward with this, knowing that we will get that, that information um as soon as possible. It's not like the city's not going to get paid.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I'm not concerned, I, I, I too am not concerned that we're gonna get paid. I'm concerned about the administrative process that like this event now, I'm not sure, was a month ago. And we're just finding now that we, the people are having turned the money in. It seems like, it doesn't seem like good business to me. I just, and uh, but anyway, we have a, uh, we, one more, we have one more um input from uh Mayor Protem Martinez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor uh Rollins. Um, look, I, I think the, the parking is our, our fault. Um, we should have the staff. I don't think we should make them include, you know, the, the parking in, in the membership of getting in, into the event. Um, I'm pro the event, um, but just as a businessman myself, I don't feel comfortable approving or let's just say, selling another product without actually getting the profits from the first, from the first one. I'm not gonna keep selling something if I'm not, if I'm not getting money back. You know what I mean? Like, that to me doesn't make sense. Um, that, that's very disappointing in my, in my part for, from the city staff. Um, I, I think th- this is something that, that shouldn't have had to happen, you know, before today's meeting. And I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a problem approving this in the future, in the near future. Um, it, it's not about like the fact that we didn't get paid. It's like you said, we're gonna get paid, but it's just the, it's just that we, we don't, we, we don't know the numbers or anything. It's just to, to me that, like you said, it doesn't seem like, like good practice.
Okay, um, Councilperson uh Perez.
I agree with um Mayor Protem Martinez. Um, I think we should hold off in approving till we get the issue rectified with the last event. And I also agree with Councilmember Hernandez. Um, I think if we're going to eventually approve anything, we need to have a way out. Um, if the first event doesn't go as planned, we need to be able to um have an opportunity to cancel the future events.
Mayor, Mayor Rollins, i- if I may interject, the motion that was on the table is, is to deny. I wanted to offer procedurally perhaps different options, just given the fact that this is a public hearing. Uh, closing the public hearing with a rejection would likely obligate the applicant to go all the way back through the process, that basically the permit would be denied and refiling would need to occur. There is a different option in which the city council could continue this public hearing, awaiting additional information to a date certain, which would be the February seventh meeting. This would also prevent or denial of the application as well as re-noticing of a public hearing from city staff's perspective uh and would allow staff adequate time to address the concerns that were highlighted here during this public hearing.
So, so a motion could be made instead of denying it, uh, an amendment could be made to continue this public hearing to the next um city council meeting.
On February seventh.
Yeah, uh, okay, so I, I will make, I will. Hold on a second, I, I have to clarify something here. Um. We have a motion and a second. So you're in, so Kevin, you're trying to lead us into introducing a second motion.
I am.
This goes back to our training earlier this week, right?
Right, right.
Okay, but here's my, here's my problem with, with that approach. There, there's some, some issues here administratively that need to be worked out.
And council has the option to work those out.
Okay, yeah, okay. But we have a motion in a second and, and I don't. Okay. Pretend really. I, I would like to make an amended, I would like an, um, I think that's the term, an amended motion that we can, or is it amended motion or is it completely separate motion? Help me out, Sp- uh, Mr. Spalding, what kind of a motion would it be? I would like to call the question, we have a motion and a second. Okay, well, I would like to make an amended motion.
Okay, uh, procedurally, since we have a motion to call the question, a vote would need to be taken without discussion and it would need to be passed by a super majority and that would be four to one on a motion to deny the application.
Okay, so uh after we, after that's happened, uh, would, would the amended motion be done now? Or would it be done after the vote is made on the first motion?
It, it would be done second, but i- the first, first parliamentary rules govern. So we have a motion to call the question, is there a second? If there's no second, motion fails. That leaves the first motion seconded to uh, to deny the application still on the table. Uh, a substitute motion could be entertained if the mayor wills it so.
Okay, so I would like to make a substitute motion to continue this public hearing to the next city council meeting um with the proviso that a lot of the questions that all of the councilmen have brought up get rectified as part of that presentation at the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, so there's a mo- uh, Madam Clerk, can you take a vote on the amended or the substitute motion? I think that goes first and then we go back to the ma- main motion.
There.
I'm voting this. The, the main motion died, so we're only voting on the amended motion that, that you put forward, Mayor Rollins. Okay, I didn't know we voted on the other one yet. It died. Okay, okay, so there, there's a motion, I, I made a motion, uh, is there a second?
You have a second.
I already seconded it. Okay, I'm sorry, second. So now we're down to um, Madam Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Mayor Rollins?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Martinez?
Yes.
That's.
To continue the hearing to the date certain of February seventh.
And I wanna make a note, I wanna thank City Attorney Spalding for providing us that training the other day. Here we go. We are now going to recess the city council meeting and call to order the Waini- Port Wainimi Surplus Property Authority. I'd like, uh, I'd like to call a special joint session of the Surplus Property Authority. May we have a roll call for the Surplus Property Authority?
Member Gama?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
I was getting a glass of water.
Yeah. Member Perez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Martinez?
President, we, we're taking a roll.
Carol. Yes. Okay, you now have the Surplus Property Authority called to order, sir.
Okay, so the nu- number ten, the item, business item for the Surplus Property Authority is the approval of the recognized obligation payment scheduled twenty-two to twenty-three and the fit, and the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, successor agency administrative budget for the period of July first, two thousand twenty-two through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Will staff present their report?
Yes, good evening, Successor Agency Board. I would like to introduce Dominique Clark with RSG. She's a senior consultant with RSG. And um RSG has been providing successor agency consulting services since the dissolution of the redevelopment agency. Um, we expect this fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three will be the last uh year for the successor agency as given that the agency's last enforceable obligations will be paid off during this twenty-two, twenty-three period. Um, so with that, I'll uh pass it on to Dominique to go through the presentation.
Good evening, thank you for that introduction. So I'll quickly go through the, the slides, there aren't too many. Um, so first, the ROPS, which stands for Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule, is due to the state on February first. And so before we submit it to the state, we have to, to also submit it to the Oversight Board, the County Oversight Board, and that meeting's next week. And before we do that, we wanted to bring it before all of you tonight to get your approval. And the ROPS is essentially um something that's left over from redevelopment days. So this slide just gives a very quick overview of redevelopment. It was approved in the fifties to redevelop wide areas and allowed cities to retain a higher percentage of property tax dollars to fund infrastructure, economic development and affordable housing. But in twenty-twelve, um Governor Brown dissolved redevelopment in California. And so at that time, all redevelopment agencies went away, but pretty much all of them were in the middle of contracts and projects. So the way that they handled that was they created successor agencies to wind down all of those contracts and all of the obligations of the former redevelopment agencies. In the city of Port Wainimi's case, the city stepped up to take the role as successor agency to the former redevelopment agency, which is typical for cities throughout the state. So California Health and Safety Code requires the successor agency to annually submit a ROPS. And as I mentioned, the order is, it goes to the Oversight Board and then it also goes to the County Auditor, the State Controller's Office and the State Department of Finance. So the ROPS that we're discussing tonight covers the period of July twenty-two to June twenty-two thirty. And it's due to the State Department of Finance on February first. There is a penalty of ten thousand dollars per day if, for the city, not the successor agency, if the ROPS is submitted late, but we haven't had an issue with submitting it late. And I intend that it'll be submitted on time this year as well. This slide just talks about the County Oversight Board. So initially, when redevelopment agencies dissolved, each successor agency had their own local oversight board. So in Port Wainimi, Port Wainimi had its own oversight board. But beginning in twenty-eighteen, the local oversight boards were replaced with a countywide oversight board, which is why we now have to go to the Ventura County Oversight Board to get approval of our ROPS. And that meeting is on January twenty-sixth, which is next week. So the next slide just shows what we're requesting on this ROPS. Um, as Mrs. Sato mentioned. Port Wainimi is in a really great position because this is going to be the last ROPS. Because the biggest item that was on the ROPS were bonds, the twenty-seventeen tax allocation refunding bonds. And those will be paid off in twenty-two, twenty-three. So once those are paid off, then the successor agency will dissolve. And we will no longer have to do ROPS or anything related to the successor agency. So there are only three items on this last ROPS, um, and they're listed here. Number six is fiscal agent fees, which are related to the bonds. The second item, number fifteen, is the administrative allowance, which is afforded to all successor agencies. And then the final item is the bonds themselves. And so we're asking for a total of about seventy thousand dollars in the A period, which is July to December twenty-twenty-two. And one point three million dollars in the B period, which is January to June twenty-twenty-three. And we can go to the next slide. So the other item that is on the ROPS form is we have to do a cash balance reconciliation. The reconciliation is always a bit delayed, so we're doing a cash balance reconciliation for fiscal year nineteen-twenty, which was two years ago. And so as of the end of that period, the successor agency had about four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars um, in their account. However, because that was so long ago, uh, most of that money has already been committed to be spent. Four hundred and forty-six thousand was already used in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. And about thirteen thousand will be used this year, so that leaves only about eight thousand six hundred dollars. That is available and isn't already committed. So how that works is the Department of Finance will just reduce our funding request by that amount. Because they don't want any successor agencies holding on to any cash that hasn't been spent. And the next slide just gives a quick graphic to show the timeline one more time. So next week, we'll bring the ROPS to the Oversight Board. By February first, we'll submit the ROPS to the state. The state has forty-five days to make a determination on our funding requests. So they can approve everything, or they can choose to deny certain requests. Although we don't anticipate that anything will be denied, because we're not requesting anything new. Um, and it's mainly just our bonds according to debt service schedule. And then we will get the first half of money or the first pot of money um, in the A period on or around June first. And then we'll get the second um, distribution of money on or around January second of next year. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay. Um. With no question, uh, I don't see any questions at this point in time. I just had one, what happens with the eighty-six hundred that's not spent? What, where does that go?
So um, it'll just be subtracted from the amount that we're requesting for the twenty-two, twenty-three period. They'll just say you already have eighty-six hundred dollars, so we're just going to subtract that from what you're requesting to make sure it gets spent.
Okay, uh, seeing no questions, may I have a motion and a second to approve this item? And the recommendation is for the board to approve the resolution in accordance to with the California Health and Safety Code. HSC, section three, war, four, one, seven, seven. The Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule for July first, two thousand twenty-two through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Parentheses, rubs twenty-two, twenty-three. And the attachment of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three administrative budgets both prepared pursuant. To HSC, section three, four, one, seven, seven.
So moved.
Second.
So, so we have a motion and a second. Um, a motion by um, Councilman Gama, second by Protem. Uh, Martinez, um, may we have a roll call vote? Oh, uh, we had, we had one question, I'm sorry, uh, Councilperson Hernandez.
Yeah, uh, yeah, the rules are, you can take discussion after the motion.
Okay.
And a second, so I just wanted to confirm that we're not pulling any money out of our general fund to pay this off. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right, all right, that's all I want.
Okay. Alrighty, so with that, any other comments? Or questions? Okay, so we have a motion and a second, um, Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote?
Member Gama?
Yes.
Vice Chair Martinez?
Yes.
Member Hernandez?
Yes.
Member Perez?
Yes.
And Chair Rollins?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, at this time, do we have any authority, member reports, comments, and requests for future agenda items? Seeing none, we are now going to adjourn the Port Wainimi Surplus Property Authority. The surplus property authority will adjourn to the next regular meeting to be determined as needed. We are now going to reconvene the city council regular meeting. Uh, the business item for the city council that we will now address is number eleven. And that is the City of Port Wainimi America Rescue Plan Fund Employees Special Pay Allocation. Uh, at this time, um, City Manager Connors, can you make your report?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor and Honorable City Council. Um, on the first of December, uh, during the second special meeting for American Recovery Plan Act funding. Um, uh, twenty-eight uh, projects were reviewed, and uh, one of those was special pay for our city employees. Uh, during um, the discussion, um, the initial recommendation was twofold. One of them was that it had to be for current employees. And those employees had to serve for at least nine months during the period of March twenty-twenty to March twenty-first. The other um, component of the special pay was a pay amount uh, that was equal amongst all employees. Uh, at a hundred dollars per month during that period of eligibility. During a subsequent city, or during uh, that discussion, uh, the council elected to modify. Uh, one of those two uh, elements, the pay amounts, and created two tiers. One for uh, non-sworn police officers in the police department at a hundred fifty dollars a month. And the second tier was for sworn officers at a hundred and seventy-five dollars a month. In a subsequent council meeting, the uh, council uh, asked to create an agenda item to review. Uh, the criteria that was established, and this uh, agenda item. Um, uh, has been created and information is provided during the staff report. And to give scenarios, not really recommendation for scenarios, how would it look if we were to modify uh, those two elements? The first scenario was if we um, elected to make um, all uh, current employees. Um, in the window uh, between March uh, twenty, twenty and March twenty-first. Eligible for prorated pay at the the amount approved by council, independent of the nine-month criteria. When we look at that uh, analysis, it shows that uh, eight employees are uh, impacted. Um, and the amount that they would receive based on that prorated uh, uh, period of time that they served. Would amount to about forty-five hundred dollars. The second scenario uh, looked at, um, um, you you know, basically uh, creating or upgrading. The 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 one tier at a hundred dollars a month up to the non-swore uh, police department uh, staff amount of a hundred fifty dollars. The reason this scenario was included is because we only have a balance of uh, just over eighty thousand dollars in our ARPA accounts. Um, by uh, by modifying uh, the one hundred to one hundred fifty dollars. That equates to about fifty-three thousand dollars and would still leave us a balance of around twenty thousand uh, in our ARPA accounts. So these scenarios are presented uh, to allow uh, council to discuss um, of both uh, those two elements. One, the criteria, and the other, uh, the amount uh, in those pay bands. Um, within the, you know, the restrictions of balance left available to us in the ARPA fund. And so the re- recommendations include do nothing, um, in which um, the criteria would stand and the pay amounts would stand. Um, you could uh, modify the pay criteria, uh, which uh, you know, which was about a forty, forty-five hundred dollar. Uh, you know, renewed cost to ARPA. And this third option would be to uh, just do the pay tiers. Um, and equate those within the balance of ARPA. And then the final um, uh, option for uh, council to discuss and consider. Is modifying both of those two elements, the pay tiers as well as the criteria for eligibility for employees. And pending your questions, that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Um, so with that understood, let let's, I'm going to entertain some questions from the council right now. Uh, Councilman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor, but I think um, Councilwoman Perez had her hand up before mine.
Okay, I looked down and I saw you both up there, so thank you for diverting to Councilperson Perez.
I would like to make a request to modify the um, requirement. And do an additional, um. No minimum requirement of time served, that if they should get paid per month that they were employed during the COVID. Because I don't think we should differen- differentiate between six months, you know, exposure to two months exposure. As exposure is exposure. And I think it should be for, if you were employed during that time, um, then you should get paid for your exposure.
Okay, um, Co- Councilman Hernandez, Councilperson Hernandez.
Thank you, uh, yeah, I can uh, I can support Councilwoman Perez's um, suggestion, her recommendation there. And also, um, I'd like the council to consider increasing all city employees, um. Uh, civilian employees uh, to receive the one hundred and fifty, but I do want to make a comment here. Um. Because I I don't think everybody is aware of what went into the um, work. That w- we completed in um, assessing the the grocer's workers. Or um, the POA members and their concerns. Now, early on in this process, when we knew the ARPA money was coming, um. I think all of us were approached by the POA, I don't know that, um. Any of you actually worked directly with the grocers' union, but I did. And we, from both organizations, they reached out to us and asked for our support. Um, on the grocers' um, side of the the issue here. They went as far as providing backup data, supporting justification for why they felt the grocers needed. Um, and were deserved of this hero's bonus. And so they worked uh, with me, they worked with Steve Kenny, and they worked with um, our city manager and providing that supporting information. So to hear uh, members of our public say that there was no research and there was no planning is just simply not true. We worked very closely with the grocers associate, the grocers' union and their union representatives. And we did the same with the POA, we asked for justification for data. Um, to show the level of exposure and the risk um, incurred by our first responder community or police. Um, and they returned with that that information. Now, the way I looked at it is, um, I looked at it from personal experience, um. Working in local government for almost forty years. And knowing that civilian employees don't ha- didn't have the level of exposure that. Some of our first responders had, um, such as our police. They, the city hall offices were closed, some people were allowed to work from home. And um, so, and their interaction with the public was much less than that I s- I observed with our police department. So that was kind of my thinking there as far as why I felt the police department um, should get a higher amount. They asked for it, I think their level of exposure uh, supported it, their interaction with the public also uh, was further justification. And never did SCIU ever approach us, they came after the fact. So, you know, I'm sorry that this decision was made, it was, it was a very hard decision for us. Um, when we made it, but where was SCIU? Um, we were ready, we're willing to work with anybody who came to us. And unfortunately, they didn't come till late, and and I, I'm sorry that we've had to go through this, but you know, I'm, I'll make the recommendation to increase pay. Um, I don't know that that will um, satisfy uh, those who felt that they were being devalued. I hope that they don't feel that way, because they certainly were on the list to receive hero's pay. And we, I consider our civilian for employees just as important as anybody else, but their level of exposure and their level of risk, I felt was different. So, and that's why I uh, made the recommendation to pay our police officers a little higher.
Thank you.
Um, that concludes my comments, thank you.
Um. Mayor Protem Martinez?
Mayor Rollins, you can let Ga- uh, the City Councilmember Gama go next, because. Think he has something to say before.
I got, uh, uh, co- co- Councilperson Gama, you have a, a, an orange uh, hand raised that I can't see as well, I'm sorry. So please speak.
Just for the record, it's brown. Um, so, you know, hindsight is twenty-twenty. And um, I want to apologize to SCIU for me not being able to recognize that. The risk that they put themselves during this pandemic, it's real. Um, I know the wastewater. Has issues, you know, we know that COVID is discovered in 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 the wastewater systems. And um. And honestly, I pinch myself wondering like, how how did I not bring them into the discussion? Because uh, Councilwoman Hernandez is correct, we were approached. Probably all of us, I don't know, we don't talk to each other about. Things that are going to be on agenda, but I know I was approached and um, and for, and and again, I, like I said, hindsight is twenty-twenty. Um, there is real exposure out there, and uh, I think they should be compensated. We got money on the table, so we, i- it's, it's money that came from the federal uh, government. Um, and um, I think we should do the recommendation to um, bring them up. And if I understand it correctly, um, the total cost would be fifty-two thousand eight hundred dollars. And um, we can move on and uh, again, I I, like I said, um. Hindsight's twenty-twenty, and I recognize that the value, um, cleaning restrooms, dealing with the public. Uh, there's a lot of exposure there, and uh, we certainly appreciate them and and I'm. Uh, you know, I apologize for that oversight in 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 us, so um, it, is it appropriate to make a motion at this?
Since we, we, we can, but we've already had two comments from two of the council people, so we might as well get the third from. Mayor Protem Martinez.
And Mayor Rollins, might I also suggest, we do have members of the public, um.
Okay.
Attending, so we do want to give them the option or opportunity to provide public comments if they so choose.
So should, okay, I didn't know we had people to speak, should we have them sp- speak before we make? Well, we we should certainly have them before we make a motion, so, but uh, just to continue with the flow. Um, Count, uh, Mayor Protem Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor Rollins. Um, look, I I would like to defend City Councilmember uh, Hernandez, because I. I think we did do the research that we could, and the people that came and and to speak to us, those are the people that we heard. You know, just like they say, the speak you, we all get the grease. Uh, we heard from the grocery workers, from the police. Um, I brought up the fact like, hey, what about our field workers? I know we don't, we don't have any fields in Port Wainimi, but I was speaking on behalf of like, the city of Oxnard, you know, what about the field workers over there? Um. And yeah, maybe, maybe we could have done a little bit of better research. Um, I myself have gone to facilities, public works. Um, last year I tried to get like a ride along, and that was stopped. Um, because of COVID, I'm still hoping that maybe I can ride along with some of the workers in public works, facilities. I I'm, I would love to be more integrated with what you guys do and 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 get to know you guys better. Um. That being said, uh, I do support City Councilmember Perez's uh, idea for not differentiating somebody that's hasn't worked. You know, like the full nine, at least the nine months, and uh. And my idea was originally to give the police officers a little bit more money because they came out and they, not that they were aggressive or anything, but you know, they spoke out, you know, they came out and, and they talked to us. But then after thinking about it, I thought about it, I was like, you know what, that's kind of messed up. I don't think it's right for us to differentiate any of the employees. Like, like literally any of the employees and, and my idea is going to be for us to say, hey, you know what, why don't we just treat all the employees the same and give them a hundred and fifty dollars per month for that time period, for the months that they work. So just so you guys know, that's kind of my idea and I'm gonna more likely than not make a motion in, in that manner.
Okay.
Thank you.
Most of my thoughts concur with the rest of the city council. As a city employee for thirty-five years, I noticed a lot of times that I was remiss here at this time that a lot of times the people who are like the entry level workers are not organized in a fashion to come out or feel comfortable coming out to the council and making those presentations. And I feel badly that I didn't think about them even though they didn't make the presentation. Because a lot, again, a lot of times they're not comfortable coming out and making those presentations. So at this time, I, I did want to clarify from Councilman Perez, her thoughts. I, I agree that regarding the amount of time, it, we shouldn't necessarily differentiate giving these this payment. Are we, are you requesting that we give the same amount for somebody who's been here, say, the full nine months versus two months or that it's prorated? I'm not sure.
Prorated.
Prorated, okay. So with, with those thoughts, I would like to entertain a motion. Would someone like to make a motion?
Mayor Rollins?
Yes.
If we, if we could just ask for members of the public real quick, just to make
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, I, heaven forbid, I'm sorry. So can we, members of the public, who, that you have online, speak at this point in time?
Sorry, I don't have anybody designated, nobody's indicated that they would like to, but I do see members of the public. So I just wanted to provide them the opportunity to either unmute their microphones or they can use the raise the hand feature. And now would be the time if anybody did want to submit public comment.
Okay, I see two or three names that I don't recognize from the members of the public. Here is your opportunity to speak on this item. Okay, seeing no public comment, I would like now to entertain a motion regarding this subject. I will, I will read through the city council review. Okay, so review and discuss the city of Port Winnimi American Rescue Plan Act Special Pay for City Employees Allocation Previously Approved on December twenty twenty-one for a hundred and seventy-one thousand. The original proposed staff recommendation included standard monthly stipend of a hundred dollars per active employee per month with a minimum of nine months service between two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one. The council modified the recommendation and approved three different pay, payment tier systems for sworn pri, sworn police officers for a hundred and seventy-five, nor non-sworn police department employees for a hundred and fifty, and all other employees for a hundred per month. So we have, we have four options on the table with anybody. Council, seeing those options, would someone like to make a, a mo, a motion on one of those options? Councilman Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor Rollins.
Mayor Protem, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem.
No, no worries, Mayor Rollins. I would like to motion to not differentiate between basically, City Councilmember Perez's idea of, you know, they work for a month and they, they, they get it for a month. A hundred, and the amount, in my opinion, should be a hundred and fifty dollars with no tiers. So basically, if you're an employee of the city, that's, that's what it is. So I think a hundred and fifty dollars is generous, considering that it's, it's more than the original idea of a hundred. I know it is less than what we had offered the sworn police officers originally, but I think I think this would be a pretty good idea to just basically make it even all, all, all across the board.
Excuse me, Mayor, the city manager. I, I just want to make, make everyone aware that all employees have been paid already. So all police officers, all police department employees and all other employees have received payments along those tier lines. So you would be taking money back from
Okay, then in that case, we won't take money back and I'd say we just do a hundred and seventy-five for all the employees.
Thank you, Mayor.
Which I think that was a better idea anyways.
I'll second that motion. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to give all city employees a hundred and seventy-five dollars, but prorated by the amount of time that they've actually worked. So nine months working their way down to if they've only been here for a mon, one month.
Excuse me, Mayor, one, one more time. All employees at a hundred and seventy-five dollars would, would exhaust the balance and create a deficit in the American fund. So the only combination that technically works out is really to upgrade the, the one hundred dollar per month employee to a hundred and fifty dollars. And that would leave a, a proximal balance somewhere between fifteen and ten thousand dollars.
Okay, would, would that information, would someone like to make an amended motion?
An amended motion?
I'm sorry, we have some questions here. So Councilman Hernandez.
I'm just I'm just thinking about why we value each one of the, the employees is, is important. I think there was other criteria in our decision that led to the tiered system and that being their exposure to the public, their ability to work from home, and the, the risk that they had in, by virtue of the fact that they had greater exposure, greater or lesser exposure to the public, for instance. And I can understand the public works people being included in that first responder package. So I'm wondering, because to me, the public works people are first responders. We need them out there early on. They're usually the first on scene before sometimes police even show up. So what if we just increased the amount for those street crews who were on call, who were working out in dangerous situations? Increase that category to, to the hundred and seventy-five that we're giving to police. That'd be something that the council would consider.
Yes.
City Manager Connors. Councilperson Hernandez's recommendation, how would that affect the budget? If we didn't, if we gave it to Public Works, I guess, and sanitation people?
Honestly, I'd have to do the, do the, I'd have to run the numbers and look at the payroll. And so I, I couldn't give you an answer right now because again, there's, there's, you know, there's water personnel, there's wastewater, there's streets personnel. I, I, I don't really have any definition of what, what the risk group is and that's what makes this scenario very challenging when you want to differentiate those risk exposures between employees.
Okay. I'm sorry.
And I think you have to consider, just if I could say one more thing, you have to consider the level of PPE that they were given in their work environment. Were they, were we operating under a program that was ensuring their safety? So I think those, those criteria have to be figured in to this as well. So if that's not going to be possible, then maybe we go back to one fifty for all civilian employees and, and let the police department retain the one seventy-five.
I would support that, the one fifty and then the prorated employment.
Mayor, Mayor Protem Martinez.
I guess I would say that I'm, I'm still going to say that they should all be the same, a hundred and seventy-five, whatever it is. Because I'm not trying to do any tiers right now.
It puts us in a deficit though.
Well, how much is a deficit? How, how much was it again? Because that was actually one of my questions. So if, if we don't, if we say, if we prorate it per, per month and we do a hundred and seventy-five, how, how much in, in the deficit are we?
Probably anywhere from five to ten thousand dollars.
Five, ten thousand dollars? I don't, to me, that's, it's not a big deal. I wouldn't even mind getting that money from our general fund. We've been in a surplus for the last couple of years. I mean, we just spent, we just had fifty-five thousand dollars for a job that we, we don't have right now that we, in my opinion, we should probably have billed anyways.
I'm afraid that's
I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to sound messed up or anything. I'm just saying like to do something right, five, ten thousand dollars, I don't, I don't think it's a big deal.
I think the big deal is where it comes from and if we do approve this, I don't think it can come from the general fund because then that's viewed as a gift of public funds.
May I join the discussion, Mayor Rollins?
Yes, Mayor, Mayor, I mean, Councilman.
Okay, so I'm looking at the staff report. Staff report says the estimated total ARPA fund impact would be approximately fifty-two thousand eight hundred dollars. We have eighty thousand dollars on the table. So the question is, if we took the balance of those employees who've already been paid and increased them by twenty-five dollars and increase the SEIU employees by the seventy-five, we could find ten thousand, twelve thousand dollars of ARPA expenditures that we've already approved. Remember, we approved four point five million dollars in expenditures, so I wouldn't have a problem pulling pulling an appro, the same amount from everything we approved to cover this case. And so that's what I would like to, I would like to second Mayor Protem Martinez's motion. And if we run out of ARPA funds, then we take it, we divide the total number of approvals by the amount needed and we take a little bit from each category that we've already provided. Problem solved, no deficit, and everybody's treated equally. And so I guess that's a second on Bobby's motion. Mayor Protem Martinez.
So we, we have a motion on the floor by Mayor Protem Martinez to pay all employees a hundred and seventy-five dollars. Seventy-five dollars, but to pay, and then to also have a tiered system, not a tiered system, but a, what do you call it, per month? I'm blanking out on the term now, but pay down, if, if, pay everybody, but then pay everybody based on the amount of time that they work, but at a hundred and seventy-five per month. And, and I, we have a first and a second, so can we call for the vote?
I'm sorry, Mayor Rollins, but you missed the part about if we run in a deficit on ARPA funds. We, we pull an equal amount from each of the projects that we previously approved, which in most cases is going to be insignificant. I mean, you look at Bubbly Springs Park, we approved one point four million. You look at all the other ones that we did, so.
Instead of some of the, some of the figures that we, we gave out, people were very small amounts. Could we just take it out of Bubbly Springs to five or ten thousand? And just call it a day? As opposed to pulling it, pulling it out from each little piece of people?
The idea is to make it fair so we don't get caught up into, well, why are you taking it from us? If we take an equal amount from every project, then I think that's the easiest way to go.
Yeah, I, I, I would prefer to have it out of one particular project that we spend the most amount of money. But Councilperson Hernandez, weigh in.
I, I don't know if we're really getting in the weeds here on, in telling staff how to, how to figure out this problem. I'd rather just have them figure it out and take it where they can, take it from where they can best find it. Let them resolve the issue and, and then report back to us. I don't think we have to dictate how they do it.
But again, I, I just want to make the point that I'm trying to spread it equally amongst all the other projects. What if somebody decided, well, let's take it from the Boys and Girls Club van? I don't think that would go over very well with the Boys and Girls Club. So if we have fifty projects and we need ten thousand dollars, math teacher Martinez, I can't, I can't think that quickly when I'm talking, but you know, it would amount to
Well, City Councilmember Gama, just, just to make it simple, I have faith that our city manager Connors will figure out where the money, where we can best pull, pull the money from.
City, City Manager Connors, do you have kind of the spirit of what we're trying to do?
I have the spirit, but I'm a little bit reluctant without council approval on, on a method. Here's my recommendation, here's my recommendation though. I will take an equal amount from all capital projects, which would exclude all the nonprofits and, you know, the Boys and Girls Club. That will work.
I like that idea.
I'm going to make a motion that we elevate everyone to one seventy-five. And if we run into a deficit on ARPA funds, that we're not going to touch the nonprofits, but we're going to spread out the balance amongst the capital improvement projects.
And it's going to be prorated.
And it's going to be prorated.
Right. So we got the, so
Motion.
That's a motion. Madam Clerk, do you have kind of the essence of that motion?
Yes, sir, I absolutely do.
Okay, so may we take a roll call vote at this time?
Not until you get a second.
I, I thought we did have a second.
You do have a second. Bobby seconded.
Bobby seconded. I'm not sure, did Bobby make the motion or did?
Oh my God.
We added to the motion, we amended the motion, so and the city clerk has the motion, amended motion, and we're ready, I think, to go.
Yes, sir, I'll, I'll go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Okay.
Councilmember Gama.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Yes.
Councilmember Perez.
Yes.
And Mayor Rollins.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. We will now move up to item twelve on the agenda. Request for funding for emergency motel voucher program. And we have Chief Salinas to make that report.
Hello, everyone. Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council, city staff and members of the public listening this late into the evening. I'm here to present a staff report which creates an emergency motel voucher program in our city. You have all been provided a copy of the staff report, so I will summarize this for everyone. We do not have such a program at this time, nor am I aware of any similar previous program in our city. The voucher program will allow the police department, or specifically our homeless liaison officer, to provide emergency housing in a local motel, which is paid by the city of Port Winnimi. This program, upon your authorization, will allow the city manager to enter into agreements with our local innkeepers for discounted rates, of course, to provide emergency housing for challenging homeless situations, local disasters such as residential fires, victims of domestic violence, or, or victims of human trafficking. This provides a stopgap measure for a need that the police department commonly comes across during the most inconvenient times. An example of this would be a homeless individual who wants permanent shelter and wants to accept assistance. But with the current housing shelter requirements, a TB test or a COVID test would be required, which, as you know, is a twenty-four to forty-eight hour turnaround. This will help fill that need. A residential fire of an apartment complex displacing numerous victims. The voucher program will allow local families to stay locally while temporary housing can be located. The American Red Cross typically handles such needs, so this is in place when they aren't available for immediate response or the request is overwhelming. Another example, it's one AM on a Saturday morning and a DV victim was seriously assaulted and the suspect's whereabouts are unknown. The victim has nowhere else to go, which is compounded if they have children. A local women's shelter is unreachable due to the time of the day. A local women's shelter is unreachable due to the time of the day, and county assistance won't be available until Monday. This would be an example where we would use this program. Another example, horrific crime occurs in a family residence, and the entire premises is a crime scene. They have no local family and/or they live in a garage to make ends meet. This is another example of where this would be used. Uh, one more example, a homeless family living in a vehicle with a broken heater whereby temperatures will reach near freezing. This would be another example of where the housing voucher can be used. So mind you, many shelters are already at max capacity at this time due to social distancing limits, and this program will allow us to help bridge that gap until shelter openings become available during COVID, or once we get past COVID. So our homeless liaison officer will administer the emergency motel voucher program as an emergency protective response only, while linking the community member to local and regional programming and services in order to identify short-term shelter options and to begin a plan towards permanent supportive housing. This program will require funding and approval from City Council with a request and amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars per fiscal year. This accounts for approximately seventy-five to one hundred vouchers per year. So, a few rules, vouchers will not exceed three days without the approval from the chief of police or city manager, and should only be applied in the most dire of circumstances. Vouchers will only be used in motels that have been approved and are on our vendor list and that we have agreements with, and there will be strict guidelines imposed by the HLO for anyone using the voucher program, such as the use of drugs or alcohol, or following the established rules of the motel. So with that, if anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Councilperson Perez.
I have a comment and a question. Thank you for your presentation. Um, who is the hotel? Do we have a name of a hotel already that's willing to partner with this?
So we have four motels in the city of Port Weneme. We have the Holiday Inn Express, which I guess we would classify as a hotel, America's Best Value, Casa Via Mar, as well as the Surfside Inn. So we will be reaching out to each one of those establishments and entering into agreements with those that want to participate in the program.
Thank you, and this is great. I highly recommend this. I am in such support of this. There's been numerous times where my husband called late at night asking for help to find a homeless shelter for a woman who needed a place to go, or, or something similar, and we just couldn't find anything. So this is great. Long in time coming. Thank you.
Yes, and on a previous, our most recent occasion, the officer actually paid for this out of their own pocket.
Councilperson Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor Rollins. Uh, thank you, Chief, for your presentation and for coming up with a solution to a problem that's, uh, been ongoing for, for a long time now. And I, I know that, uh, by virtue of me taking on the homeless issue and doing the presentation with Councilman Martinez, people seem to think now that I'm the, the first, the go-to person for hotel vouchers, cuz I get calls from the community now saying, can you get me a hotel voucher? So I really appreciate, um, your efforts in putting this together. I, I'm going to support this, um, uh, motion, and, um, I thank you again for what your homeless liaison officer has been doing, all the hard work he's out there doing. I think this will help him greatly and save officers' time.
Thank you.
Council, um, person, Gama.
Thank you, Chief. Excellent. Um, I think it's, uh, tying the, the services to the voucher is a major step in the right direction. I, though, want us as a body to look up to the county and the state, and we gotta advocate for more services. Across this country, we're seeing homeless people get involved in horrific crimes. And, you know, you have to think, if there's just a way to, to, to get one person off that track that they're on, then this is totally worth it. So, um, really appreciate the fact that you brought this up now, very timely, considering things that are going on across the country. And, um, I do wanna encourage us as a body to reach up to the county and, and try to advocate for more services. We need more services for these people. Thank you so much. And, um, there's no other discussion. I'd like to make a rec, uh, motion to approve.
Okay, I, I did have a comment. I'm in full support of, um, this program. The only caveat that I would like to see is kind of a report back, perhaps, quarterly as to what categories we're spending the money for people on. Not necessarily the end of particular names of the people, but the fact that, you know, we're spending so much on one of these categories that you mentioned, with how we actually end up spending the money.
Absolutely. We will, uh, have an evaluation process as part of this, uh, program. Uh, it was included in the staff report whereby we'll be tracking all of those that use the program, and we'll be look, reviewing it after every year to see if we need to expand it, continue it, or actually terminate the program.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion by, um, Councilman Gama to approve this, um, expenditure.
Second.
And, and we have a second by, uh, Mayor Protem Martinez. Madam Clerk, can we have a vote?
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Rollins?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All righty. Um, we have a, we have, but we're covering a lot tonight. Taking a while, but we're covering a lot. City, uh, number thirteen is City Council Liaison Committee Appointments for two thousand twenty-two. Uh, will staff present the report?
Yes, sir, thank you. Kristy Buxkemper, City Clerk, for the record. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight I have the pleasure of presenting the Council Liaison Committee Appointments Report. Each year, following the City Council reorganization, which this year, uh, actually last year, uh, occurred on December sixth, two thousand twenty-one, the council considers appointments and reappointments to various committees, regional boards, and commissions. The city has an established list of those agencies and committees which require a Port Weneme City Council member liaison, and tonight council has the opportunity to appoint, appoint members and alternates for the upcoming year. Active participation on various boards, commissions, committees, and other governmental agencies is instrumental in providing for city representation, and councils encouraged to review the meeting times and commitments prior to committing to any appointments. There's no fiscal impact to establishing a list of liaisons. And before you tonight is the recommendation to simply discuss, reorganize, and appoint or reappoint council members to the various boards. For help in facilitating the appointments, I'll share my screen, and I'll display a list of the current committees, and I can help annotate the appointments as you make individual nominations. My recommendation for council to proceed is, um, to go through the entire list, discussing each appointment, make nominations, or express individual interest in being assigned to that city or that, um, board as a liaison. And at the end of the discussion, after all appointments have been made, it would be appropriate for council to make a motion to adopt the, uh, the list in its entirety. And that, this concludes my report, and I welcome any questions you might have at this time.
Uh, City Clerk, I was wondering, um, if everybody is comfortable in their current positions, is, could we fast-track this and just continue on as we are right now? Or do we absolutely have to go down the list?
Uh, we could absolutely approve the list as is, um, depending on how the other council members feel. If there's anybody who, uh, would like to just talk specifically about an appointment that they're interested in, we can, we can absolutely entertain that.
Okay, uh, taking, um, Councilman Gama's suggestion, um, first of all, do we have anybody who wishes to, um, take on a new position or give up a position that they have now? Councilman, well, the, the Councilman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor Rollins. I, um, have the desire to retain all my current council appointments, um, but I am also interested in serving as an alternate to Beacon, and, um, also serving on the, um, Port City Committee.
Okay.
Hold on, I gotta clarify. I thought the Port City Committee is Mayor and Mayor Protem.
Not necessarily. There's no rules, fixed rules that say that anywhere.
Um, well, okay, um, to move this along, as far as being an alternate, I would relinquish my, uh, role as an alternate to the Beacon. So, um, Councilperson Hernandez could serve as an alternate.
I'd like to nominate Councilwoman Hernandez to be the alternate to Beacon.
Great. Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, now we move on to the other request. Um, um, as mayor, I would like to still stay on as the City Port Standing Committee as in the past. And I would nominate, um, I would nominate, uh, Mayor Protem, um, Martinez to be the, uh, other representative for that.
I'll second that motion.
So, uh, we have a motion on the floor, uh, to, uh, well, okay, so we have, first motion on the floor to have, uh, Mayor Rollins and Mayor Protem serve on the City Star, Port, uh, City Port Standing Committee. May we have a, uh, a vote on that, City Clerk?
Mayor Rollins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Very good. So, uh-
If I may interrupt, we didn't do a motion in a second on, um, Councilwoman Hernandez being alternate to Beacon.
Yeah, I thought we just did. Okay, so let, um, um-
But my, my preference would be to do a, a motion at the very end for just the collective list, so that we're not doing individualized motions, um, for each item.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's gonna be too much change, but, uh, let me give out one last call to each of our council persons and mayors. Are there any positions that you would like to relinquish or to, that you would like to take on that, uh, from the previous year?
My answer is no.
Is, does anybody see, uh, feel overwhelmed by their, um, current, uh, positions?
No.
Okay, then, I'm okay then. I'm good.
Okay. So, being that there's no other adjustments to the council committee appointments, can I entertain a motion?
Mayor Rollins, I do have a question.
Okay.
To Councilmember Hernandez, I see a new one on there. Was that on there last time? The Southern California Edison Advisory Committee? Is that newly added?
No.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah.
Cuz it says newly added, so I didn't, I didn't remember it from last time.
I don't know why it's newly added. Maybe it just came into existence, uh, the last couple of years.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
So I just, is there an alternate to that, or?
No, no alternate from, and they rarely meet.
Okay.
Maybe quarterly at most.
Is it, anyway, anyone have a desire to be an alternate in case, uh, Councilperson Hernandez cannot make it? Councilman Hernandez, you had your hand raised. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I wanted just to make another count, uh, comment and ask staff, um, if they could look into what is going on with the Ventura County Regional Airport Authority, which was established by LAFCO. I couldn't find any information on it. You know, this was all about finding and establishing a regional airport for Ventura County. And I know that, uh, Camarillo just voted against, um, using their airport for a commercial airport, and the base has since, um, made that possibility, uh, go away because of the different uses that they have now for the, the base runway. And so I don't know that this committee even needs to be in existence. So if staff could look into that, I'd appreciate it.
Uh, excuse me, Mayor, if I, I could address the issue of having been on the, uh, the, the base side of it. Uh, that committee meets once a year, and they basically ask, uh, the, the military if they still, um, are persistent with, um, being not interested in a joint appointment to airbase, and, and that's their answer, and it probably will be, uh, that answer in perpetuity. So, um, it's not a really useful committee, uh, but that's what, and that's the only thing that they do every year.
Thank, thank you for that. So maybe whoever, uh, maybe we just go through LAFCO and see if they, they can, um, resolve that and maybe have that committee stand down. So thank you, City Manager.
I, I think they should keep asking the question. I mean, I've been to Hawaii, and they have a joint-use airfield out there, so.
So, uh, there is, uh, do we have a motion then to approve the revised committee assignments for two thousand twenty-two? I'm entertaining that.
Motion to approve, second.
Okay. Motion in a second. Can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Martinez?
Yes.
And Mayor Rollins?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all.
Okay. So now moving on to item number fourteen. That's the renewal and the reconsideration of remote meetings pursuant to Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, three, E. City Attorney Spalding, do you have a report?
I do, Mayor Rollins and Honorable Counsel. This should be old hat by this point in time, as we've done this quite frequently. The council's been fully briefed as it pertains to A B three sixty-one, which you may remember amends the Brown Act to allow the council to continue meeting remotely without, without compliance with the telephonic meeting requirements elsewhere found in the Brown Act, uh, which would include allowing people to view you, uh, attending the meeting from your home. Um, what is required is that every thirty days pursuant to subdivision E three of section fifty-four, nine, fifty-three is that the City Council, uh, review the circumstances of the state of emergency, which Governor Newsom's proclamation of emergency from March twentieth, March fourth, two thousand twenty, uh, continues to exist and find that the state of emergency continues to directly impact the ability of the members to meet safely in person, or that state or local officials continue to impose or recommend measures to promote social distancing. If you remember correctly, the Ventura County Public Health Officer on September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one issued a letter to all local agencies stating his recommendation to maintain social distance. Uh, in addition to these requirements, we all heard Mr. Madelon's excellent speech tonight, presentation tonight regarding the increases in infections surrounding our county. Uh, I should bring to your attention that on January fifth, two thousand twenty-two, Governor Newsom issued executive order N one twenty-two, which eliminated certain sunset provisions of A B three sixty-one that applied to state agencies and the Gloria Romero Open Meetings Act, which, uh, which applies to certain school boards. Uh, those provisions allowed A B three sixty-one to sunset or terminate as of January thirty-fifth, thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. The executive order extended the application of A B three sixty-one to all state agencies, as well as all school boards through March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, the reason the governor issued this order is, he said that requiring large numbers of individuals to gather and potentially travel long distances for in-person public meetings could potentially and unnecessarily expose numerous people to COVID-nineteen, further contribute to the ongoing surge in cases caused by the Omicron variant, compound disruptions to our economy, and undermine public health measures during the current state of emergency. And so with that, and given the current state of the Omicron variant in Ventura County, staff's recommendation would be to make a determination that state or local officials continue to impose or recommend measures to promote social distancing and continue meeting remotely for the next thirty days.
We have a motion.
Motion to continue in remote meetings? Second?
Hand up for discussion.
Okay, um, we have discussion. Um, Councilperson Gama?
Yes, I just wanted to acknowledge, uh, Mayor Protem Martinez. He's a teacher. He's in the classroom every day with his students, and I wanna shout out to every teacher out there in California that's taking precautions. They're with their students. They're inside. When you drive by playgrounds, you see students playing on the playground. And as you all know, I'm gonna vote no, but I just wanted to shout out to all the teachers out there, um, taking- But I just wanted to shout out to all the teachers out there, um, taking precautions, making the students their priority and, uh. Mayor Pro Tem Martinez, thank you for doing that.
Okay, councilperson Perez?
Yeah, so I would like to say, although I do pre- appreciate, uh, count, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Martinez and all teachers. Saying the opposite of that doesn't necessarily mean they're not doing their job, my daughter's school was shut down because. Positive tests went up five percent and that's what the rule is, if staff and, and, um, students, it increases five percent, it has to be shut down, so. I mean, this is a fast-moving virus, it went. Through my entire family and everybody I talked to has it, and I think it's prudent right now, given how fast it moves, how contagious it is. It doesn't, vaccines do not protect against it, we need to just be a little smarter right now and just hold off. We're not harming anyone or ourselves in doing so.
Okay. Okay, so we had, I meant, uh, we have a motion in a second, with no other comment, can we take a roll call vote?
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
At the risk of sounding not as smart as everyone else, I'm gonna vote no.
Mayor Pro Tem Martinez?
Yes.
And Mayor Rollins?
Yes.
Motion passes on a four-one vote.
Okay. Um, at this point in time, I would like to have our city manager have, provide comments and reports.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, honorable city council, I'll make this quick, I know it's been a long night, I, I've got a couple, uh, quick, um. Uh, takeaways for council and the public, um, one of the things that, um. I probably don't know as a community very well, but there's something this city does every year. Um, after Christmas and then we have a, uh, a Christmas tree pickup site that we actually pick up trees and, and, uh, remove them for families with the live Christmas trees. Uh, that concluded on the fourteenth of January. Um, if you missed it, uh, nine January was Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, I think there's some cards left in Ralph's, uh, for your favorite police officer. But I, uh, in all seriousness, I wanna thank, commend, um, and, uh. And convey our felt, uh, thanks and appreciation for our, our own Port Wainimi police officers. Um, an annual event, a SABR event is coming up on the thirty-first of January. We have an active role, although it's run by, uh, Mr. Anarudh Prasad. Um, and that is the, uh, Flight Two Sixty-One Memorial. At four twenty-two PM on the thirty-first of January. Um, we normally obviously, uh, do cleanup and we support the families, this will be another remote. Uh, event, uh, through Zoom, uh, where most of the families will be viewing friends and families of those victims. And then the last thing I have is, um, and again, um, continuation of our, our homeless liaison, um, transit liaison. Um, efforts, uh, we are doing a homeless count project on the, uh, twenty-sixth of January. Um, there's opportunities for volunteers and we will push information up. We are a pu- a public information officer for, uh, for what that event looks like. And with that, uh, that concludes my input, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Alrighty, um, at this free time, we will now have council member reports and comments. Starting with, uh, councilman Gama.
Thank you, Mayor Rollins, um. So earlier this week, or was it last week, it was last week, um. Since before being elected to city council, um. Mayor Rollins and I have, uh, discussed trying to bring the HOAs of our city together so that, um, they can, um. Be a part of policymaking, hopefully good policy. And, um, we're, we were able to do that last week and we had, uh, I believe eight HOAs presidents. Um, present for a meeting, um. And we didn't have an agenda and we just kinda let, let the meeting go and, and see where it went and, uh, with the hope that. These HOA presidents will reach out to other HOAs and, and give us a, a, a method, a means to, to. Engage the HOAs in our policymaking and, and, um. Like I said, there was no agenda, but clearly the issue. That is on everybody's minds, all the HOAs minds is tree policy and, um. The HOAs of our city are, are being saddled with. Enormous costs associated with the trees in and around their HOAs that have been planted. In many cases thirty to forty years ago, um, so, um. As we all know, we're, we, um, we've identified problems with trees, uh, a tree branch just the other day. A big tree branch fell across another walkway, um, where two other trees failed. They all appeared to be diseased, so, um, it just seems like we're at a point in time in this city where we, we, we need to review our, our tree policy. And work with, um, our HOA, um. To develop good policy and I know we're, we're working towards that and so, um. We had a really good meeting and, um, and, uh, I think it's, it's, it's well worth the time and I hope that the, the HOAs. Form together a, a coalition, so to speak, to help us make better policy, um. Tonight, I, um, in, uh, public comments, I, I did talk about beach cleanup and, um, I do wanna mention it again. That. It's completely unacceptable for me and the volunteers that helped me and others. To pick up dirty syringes off Wainimi Beach. They come in from the Orman Lagoon and we're all for the environment. Yet year after year after year, this deluge of trash. Gets deposited through our waterways onto Wainimi Beach. And it could be said that it's not coming from Wainimi for the most part. Um, but, um, the good news is, is that over the last five and a half years, we've made great progress. Um, in dealing with the trash after a rainfall event, in fact, I believe the first week. First week that, uh, city manager Connors was here, uh, we had his whole family out there with us, we had dumpsters and tractors and rakes and. And it's, it's so nice to be able to say today. That this latest rain didn't produce the level of, of trash that we've seen before, but it's getting better, the county's. Stepping up, the city of Oxnard stepping up, of course, city of Wainimi's stepping up and, um, but. It's an outrage to tolerate syringes. Washing up on Wainimi Beach, I, I, I'm, I'm losing my mind over this, you guys. And if anybody wants to, to see what I'm talking about, you can go to my Facebook page and I've documented it. Syringe after syringe after syringe, you may have to look, but there, I mean, it, it's, it's unacceptable and so, yes, I do want to draft a letter. And I hope that the rest of the council, uh, members could sign off on it so that we could. Get the county, get the city of Oxnard, get the city of Port Wainimi. All working together to capture and remove. The trash from the waterways so it doesn't pollute the ocean, um, as we're sit here right now. If you go across the Orman Outfall, the level of trash out there will blow your mind, there's so much. On, on the other side that we can't get to yet. But the good news is it's better than it's been before, you know, and so we're making progress and. Uh, uh, we gotta be passionate, we just, we can't tolerate. The level of disregard that, that bestows onto Wainimi Beach and so. I, I just wanted to mention that and, uh, I'll, I'll get together with the city manager and try and figure out what to do with my letter and make it nice and, but. I just want to, um. We have, we have an opportunity to better our environment and we're in a great position to do that. Um, we got great help from volunteers and, um. And this is what we should all be about and I mentioned earlier, like, if Orman Beach. Was Zuma Beach, you wouldn't have a problem because everyone would be driving by and seeing it. Orman Beach isn't Ventura Beach, well, what does Ventura Beach has, a freeway that goes right by and so. Out of sight, out of mind, um, we gotta bring attention to this wonderful place we call home, which is Wainimi Beach. And it's impacted by Orman Beach and the neglect that, uh, has been there for years, so, um. And, uh, that's it, thank you.
Councilperson Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor Rollins, uh, I'll try to just go down a list here of, um, my council comments. Um, the RDP twenty-one group has met in the last month, um, I. Uh, participated as a member of the Strategic Planning Committee. And one of the things we're looking at right now is how to assist the Navy and enhancing and highlighting some of the new commands that have stood up at the base. And, uh, the technological advances that they're making in the areas of exercise and testing. Um, there's been some talk about them doing some strategic planning, I think they're. Uh, I'm not sure that that's actually gonna get off the ground, but if they do, it would align them, uh, very well with what we've been, um, seeking to do with. Establishing Port Wainimi has a, a technology, technological hub, um, or technology hub, so, uh. More to be reported on that, um, I also attended the Public Safety Committee for the Southern California Association of Governments. And took with me, um, some key issues that I thought faced our particular city and that is, um. Homelessness, traffic safety, cybersecurity, uh, disaster preparedness and sea level rise and coastal erosion, those were the, um. The issues that I thought were most important to us in terms of public safety. Um, I also was pleased to join the, uh, League of California Cities Latino Caucus, um, they do education and training. Uh, to promote, uh, Latino elected officials. Who are interested in engaging in greater capacity within, uh, their local and state government and promoting policies. That advance Latino political engagement, so I'm really looking, uh, forward to participating on that. Um, I also conducted an interview with Daniel Chavez, um. Couple of weeks ago on Oxnard Live and spoke about some of the good work that our city council is doing. Um, I participated yesterday in the Martin Luther King Online Event, I just wanted, um. Thank the Ventura County MLK Committee for the good work that they, uh, put into hosting that event, it was a wonderful event, it was well-attended, we had hundreds of people. On the Zoom call, it was just, it was just amazing, um, and on the issue of homelessness, I, I don't know if you've all heard yet, but Tara Karith is leaving the county for Colorado. Not sure, I know that they're advertising to replace her, so we might have a little hiccup in our, um. Work in trying to join the continuum of care program, uh, with the county, but, um, hopefully they'll get that position filled soon. And thank you, uh, city manager for announcing the homeless count, which is gonna take place on February twenty-third. And then I'll be attending a, uh, United to End Homelessness, uh, Ventura County Symposium on February fourth. Um, let's see. And we've got a VCRD, uh, VRSD meeting coming up on Thursday, which I expect I'll be, um, nominated to chair that. Um, that organization, that board, um, board of directors, so more to come on that, so, uh, that concludes my comments, thank you.
Thank you. Co- uh, councilperson, uh, Martine, I mean council Perez?
Yes, I just wanted to make a request of staff and this very respectfully, and I appreciate the work and time and effort that staff puts into their reports, but I wanted to. Request for future reports that, um, all the information and accuracy and facts that are put in. So that we can make sure that we can make decisions when they're presented before us, so we don't have to delay. Making, uh, decisions on items that need to be made, that's all.
Okay. Councilman, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor Rollins, um, we will be meeting, uh, with Reach next week. Um, we didn't have a meeting, uh, earlier this month, um, other than that, I do wanna say that I've been hosting some sport events for our youth. And anybody that wants to come out and have fun, we've done, uh, basketball, volleyball, uh, soccer. And last week, uh, tried to do pickleball, we didn't really get them any people, even though there was a lot of people already playing pickleball. Um, but we did have the, uh, the COVID testing center and I'm gonna do my best. In, in collaborating with, uh, Mayor Rollins to keep having these, uh, COVID testing centers throughout our parks and we hope we can get next. Or this weekend. Um, a COVID testing center at Volker Park. So that's about it, thank you.
Right, um. I've attended most of these meetings, uh, but I'm not gonna give a report at this point in time, so. Uh, at this point in time, I'd like to move to, um, recommendation for future agenda items. Um, do we have any at this point in time, um? Mayor, I mean, um, councilperson Hernandez?
I can't hear you, your, your voice.
Got it, okay, thank you, um, I have three items, um, Mr. Mayor and, uh, the first one is a, I'd like to. Know what the city is doing to comply with the new law regarding, um, separating our food waste and putting it into, uh, green waste bins. I don't think we have green waste bins in Port Wainimi, so I'm interested in, in hearing, uh, how we're going to do comply. With the food waste, the new food, food waste law that took, um, effect in twenty twenty-two. Um, and then also the, um, statewide drought rules, um, I put in a request to have a. Presentation on how we'll be complying with the new drought rules as well. And, uh, one that I just added to my list is I'm very curious to know about. Uh, the, this meeting with the HOAs and under what authority, um, our council members are meeting with the HOAs and setting their own agenda. It seems like that's something that needs to go through council, so I'd, I'd like to get some direction from our city attorney and city manager on. Um, on what this meeting is about and why we're just learning of it now and. Um, you know, what is the? What's the process for participating in this meeting and, uh, are we potentially gonna be under a Brown Act violation here, so I'm just really concerned about it, thank you.
Two, two people don't constitute a Brown Act violation, I think.
Yes, but you're meeting with a.
But you, you and?
Okay, I, let, uh, well, okay, so we have two. Uh, agenda items right now, the first one, um. Re- re- restate real quickly your first agenda item, um, councilman Hernandez. It was about the, uh, one was about the water, one was about. Uh, your, your voice is gone again.
The food waste?
Yeah.
The drought laws?
So there's about, there's, there's two agenda items right now, the, uh, the food waste and the, um. Water issue, do we have a, uh, mo- do we have a second to have those on the agenda?
One second.
Okay, we have a sec, can we have a roll call vote on each one of those? Uh, um, city clerk?
Just for clarification, councilmember Perez, you were seconding both of those requests, the, the green waste bin report and the statewide drought rule request for presentation. Is that correct? Okay, uh, councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Martinez?
Yes.
And Mayor Rollins?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously for both of those items.
Okay.
And what about my third item?
Okay, um. Uh, address that in what, how you'd want this?
Well, I just wanna find out, um, how is it that two council members can represent the city? In, uh, meetings with the HOA without first getting city council approval, that's my question.
Okay, so you'd want some kind of a ruling from this, uh, the, uh, city attorney on that?
Yes, thank you.
So there's a motion for that? Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, can we have a vote?
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Martinez?
Yes.
And Mayor Rollins?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Do we have, um?
I have one more comment to make and that's, um. Texting during meetings, please don't, please don't do that. And you know who you are. Thank you.
Yes, and we can have a discussion on that text if you want with the entire council, but I I'm sure others text too. I see everybody on their phone. Okay, so general comment, but no, this is nothing to go on an agenda item. So, Council, Mayor Pro Tem Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor Rollins. So I would like to have a discussion, a public discussion on bringing back dogs on the beach, on the right hand side of the beach, mostly because I was hoping we'd get a dog park. I know that was voted down, me being the only one that said yes. And I know that the reason we don't have dogs is because we have birds laying their eggs. So I still think we have lots of people taking dogs nonetheless. So on the beach, so maybe we can just have them stay on the right hand side of the pier. So that's kind of like my idea. So maybe just, I like to motion a discussion on allowing dogs on the, on some place on our beach so that people can bring their dogs, especially since they're already doing it anyways.
Okay, so there's a motion to have a an agenda item where staff would bring back a report on the feasibility of having a dog park on some portion of the beach. Do we have a second to that?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Do we have a second by?
I believe you you misstated his motion.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Martinez, in the effort to make sure that I restated your motion properly, please restate it yourself.
Well, I I think it was fine. I think it's just because you used the word dog park. But I was just thinking of it like a place where people can take their dogs on our beach. But if you want, I I don't mind with the word, with the wording being dog, dog park, that's.
Are are a location on the beach for the dogs. Okay, I'll make a location. So with that, do we still have a second by councilperson Perez?
I do, and I would make mention that I believe it's Oxnard that certain time in the morning on certain days will section off a portion of a beach to allow.
So so part, so part of it, so part of the presentation by staff will probably include that when that comes about, if that comes about. So we have a motion on the floor for finding a location at the beach for dogs to walk. We have a second by councilperson Perez. Can we have a vote?
Mayor Pro Tem Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
On the Animals Services Committee, no.
And Mayor Rollins?
Yes.
Motion passes on a four one vote.
Yes. Alrighty.
Oh, I I do have one last one, Mayor Rollins. I don't really know how to formulate this one. It has to do with the our parking enforcement. I understand that we were ticketing on Veterans Day, and I know this is, this is a little late, but I, it's something that I didn't want to forget. We were ticketing and there was an individual who who was a veteran who got a ticket. And, you know, it's just like, they tried to fight it and and it was revoked. So I I still think we need to have a some sort of.
Mayor President Martinez, I think, get, take me wrong. City Manager Connors, you have it on the agenda to talk about parking, some kind of a parking summit. Am I correct?
Well, we. Yeah, there is a parking enforcement combined with street sweeping agenda item in the future. I don't have a hard date for that yet.
All right, well, then that's good with me then.
So, and can you take note when you do make that report, Councilman Connors, that you take Councilman Martinez's concerns into effect?
Yes, sir, of course.
Okay, great. Alrighty. Okay, I I I would like to request for a future agenda item, an update on on updating our tree policy and the progress that we're moving towards that. So I I want, I want to, I would like to have a presentation made by staff as to our current tree policy and any plans they have to move forward.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Can we take a roll call vote?
Mayor Rollins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Thought we already requested that, but okay.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
My other request would be to have some update on staff recruitment. I know we have a number of positions right now that we approved at the that we approved at last year's budget that are still unfilled. So I'd like to get some kind of an update as to where we are on all these different positions in the recruitment process. So we have.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a second. So we have a second on that. Can we have a roll call vote?
Mayor Rollins?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez? You're, you are muted, yeah.
Yes.
And Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Alrighty then.
Wait, Mayor Rollins, before I forget.
Okay.
I, it's it's a question for our city manager. Is the pier open twenty four seven right now?
No, it's, it is not open twenty four seven. It closes at ten P M.
Okay.
It's, and it's a rule that was initiated in conjunction with the COVID, you know, ad- adoption of new hours specific to COVID and our ability to secure and clean the janitorial services at the restrooms.
Okay. I think like two months ago, I had mentioned that we can put hours up there and there are any hours. I think it would be good for our public to know when when it opens and when it closes.
Okay, well noted, but that won't be a a report. I, if anything.
No, well, last time I was told that that we were going to do that. I just want to know if if we're still going to do that or not.
Mayor Rollins, I'd like to make a, go back to make a comment. There is a sign down there and it says it's open twenty four seven. And we brought this up before, but so I think that leads to confusion amongst everybody.
Okay.
Because there's a sign that says it's.
And we'll, we'll, we'll make that correction. There, there's, there's no need for a motion. Thank you.
Great, great. Okay, so at this point in time, I would like to adjourn the meeting. It is now, let me check my phone, not doing ten, ten fifty nine. Thank you all.
You all.
Thank you, staff. Thank you.